I will call the. Big one.
Press. Right now it's pressed. Detective, that's the microphone. We'd break that there. Work through the creek. To protect the editor. And if we can. For Mike. And if the meeting.
Good.
Oh, good. We can have, I've got some buffer questions. Can we?
That we're not required to do two-way audio Zoom, Zoom recording.
Well, this is the microphone or the total recorder.
For the city clerk to do the minutes and so forth.
As in none of these microphones are working?
There is no recording.
It's not.
On Twitch.
Hello? Okay.
All right, here we go.
I will call the Tuesday, August 5th, 2025 Allen City Council Meeting to order. Janice, could you please call roll?
Councilmember Atlin.
Here.
Councilmember LeFane.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maida.
Here.
And Mayor.
Here. Uh, we have five closed session items. First one's uh initiation of litigation pursuant to government code potential one case. Uh, second one, significant exposure to litigation. Third one, initiation of litigation. Fourth one, uh conference with real property negotiators, two seventeen Jackson Street. And the fifth one is conference with real property negotiators, three one eight Preston Avenue. Any public comment before we go into closed session?
I have a point of order, question for the attorney. Or point of inquiry. I believe um this is not to comply with the Brown Act for these reasons. There is no names on any of these one, two, and three, so how is the public supposed to comment on these items? They have no idea what they are. Um, and then four and five, typically when we go into negotiations with real estate, we don't want to let people know what we're actually looking at. So those are not on there, but they do have the negotiating parties on there. So um I don't think this complies with the Brown Act. By not having names, therefore denying any comment on one, two, and three.
Not uh not denying comment, but those are the safe harbor listing under the Brown Act, just very specific of which type of matter you're discussing. Those are the listings that you provide, so.
Except practice has been to put the names on.
Well, it doesn't really make sense to if you're doing initiation of litigation or significant exposure, the idea is that it's confidential and you're not trying to dispose.
So it's only confidential now. Because the city has been identifying the parties for years.
Well, you only identify the parties if it's existing litigation and it's actually.
I understand what you're saying, but the practice has been to identify the parties.
Well, just that would inhibit the confidentiality and sensitivity of the discussions in a way, but those, I mean, we're meeting the requirements of the Brown Act with those listings. And and for the real property, those are the required components of the listing is that.
But the address.
Yeah, addressing on the property owner.
Put my name on those earlier this year.
Which one? Which ones?
On the litigation.
For for what?
Litigation against me that the city is initiating.
I don't think we've ever had your name specifically on those items, but point me to it.
Do we have any public comment? No public comment, we will go into closed session.
I'm recused from the first item because it's.
We're back from closed session. The first three items, nothing to report. Direction was given. We, the last two will be continued to the end of the meeting. Will you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America.
Can I get a approval of the agenda, please?
Um, I'd like to object to the consent calendar and placement of the CFDs on the consent calendar. That wasn't direction that was given at the budget workshop. The direction was to bring it back with information on a citywide ballot. There was no vote taken on any of the options, to my knowledge, and the agenda didn't allow for a vote. So I'm not quite clear why they are on the consent calendar for approval.
You can pull it. You want to pull it?
Yes, I would like to pull and have them brought back as council directed with the information on a citywide ballot process.
So the information that was provided last time, this was the last time they can be brought back because they have to be on tax roll. So the direction was given, since we didn't have the fifth Tuesday meeting, that they would be on this agenda. They're usually on consent and it was option number two that the direction was given. So Shane created the reports with option number two.
The problem with that is it's not agendas, it's not put on the agenda for the public. Public had no notice. They got no input on any of this because it was put in a workshop. It wasn't put on an agenda. Guess what? We're going to raise your taxes again. Come in and give us feedback. It was put as a discussion item at a budget workshop.
And with direction from council.
Direction is not action.
I know it's not. The action is tonight.
But you've got it on the consent calendar.
Well, CFDs are usually do go on the consent calendar. You're more than welcome to pull it.
But there are certain individuals that maybe don't agree with raising the taxes.
Okay, that's fine. Are you asking to pull it to the regular?
So Andrea, if I'm getting correct, this is the last meeting that we can take any action on this.
And it's not council's fault that these things come at the very last minute. You know, we're, we're doing the best we can with what we're given and the public had no say.
I have a question for you, Andrea. It's just typically done in the workshop, correct?
No, so the direction was asked for.
In the past councils with these CFDs?
No, they were not done in a workshop.
They were not done in a workshop. They usually.
I'm asking Andrea, please.
Previously, they've done finance meetings. They've also come straight to the council. They've done, been multiple ways. So this one, I needed direction because we were coming up on the.
I understand. Okay, that was the reason for it. Okay, I just wanted to clarify it in my mind so I understood.
But when they do come to council, they're usually on consent calendar.
Always, after they've been approved. No.
No. The approval is usually on consent calendar.
That's not the way we did it last year and you can pull the main, the meeting.
Oh, I can for the last 10 years and it's always been done this way. The direction at the last, at the budget workshop was to approve option two. So Shane Morgan, he can prepare the taxes, but it's never been noticed as a public hearing. It's never.
You don't need to notice it as a public hearing, but the way it was put on the workshop agenda did not allow the public due process to say, hey, they're going to vote on something here that affects our taxes. We should have a say. And by doing it this way, you guys kind of slid it underneath.
In my opinion, there was no, absolutely no sliding, anything.
I didn't spare your opinion.
I'm not asking for you to ask for my opinion. I'm giving it. When you were done speaking, I wanted to comment.
Done speaking.
It sounded, I'm not going to argue with you, Ms. Fain.
Member of Fain.
Council member, of course, council member LaFaine. But with this consent, with these CFDs, I think we should, we have to act tonight.
Well, if you want public comment, move them to the regular agenda, like number one of the regular agenda. Is that the request?
It's not been noticed. So we're, we're past the point of noticing the public again.
So do you have a motion to pull it? What is your motion? Or do you even have a motion?
I objected to them being on the, under the consent calendar because we gave direction and direction was not followed. We did not say bring it back, put it on the consent calendar.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Um, I'd like to.
We're not even there yet.
Well.
You're only on, you haven't even gotten to the consent calendar yet. So if approval of the agenda would be to actually formally remove items from the agenda altogether.
Right. If I want to pull some from consent calendar, where do I do it? At consent calendar or now?
At consent calendar.
Okay, then I'll wait.
So again, can I get approval of the agenda? Move to approve the agenda.
A second.
First and second, no one in favor say aye?
Aye.
No.
I just have it. We have no presentations tonight. Public comment items not on the agenda. Is there anyone got public comment items not on the agenda?
Hello, I have a handout for all of you. It's pictures of the dead landscaping, the engines of Castle Oaks. These were taken the day before yesterday.
It's all good. It's all good.
Well, probably said way into the CFD, but I won't discuss that because that's on the agenda. We wanted to start out, I wanted to start out because I had a conversation with Jeff Christensen, the owner of the golf course now. And he wants to participate in the landscaping. He agrees that it looks terrible. He thinks that it's a black eye on the entrance into Castle Oaks. And he said he has the reef sources and the want to participate in something. So I asked George if we could set up a meeting. I haven't had an answer yet. Mr. Christensen said that he'd like to have me at that meeting because I kind of gave him a little bit of background. And I said, I thought it was a good idea if someone from the council came as well as George and Mr. Christensen. And I'm going to vote for myself since I've been doing this for like three years with this landscaping issue. So I'm voting myself in. And I just kind of found it a little bit interesting that every time I complain, we don't see anything out there. And then I complain and bingo, Eco-Urbans out there on a Sunday. And then they're out there again yesterday or this morning today. And, but then we don't see them at all. And I had asked also about having some water put on the front grass because it's dead. And I was told by, to Chris, that there was a broken sprinkler. And I think he was instructed to fix the sprinkler and turn in a bill to the city and he'd be paid back. Also fertilizer, he was going to do fertilizer, but he said he couldn't do that until we fixed the sprinkler. But what we wanted to know, the group, I've had people coming to my house and calling me. And what they want to know is where's the scope of work for Eco-Urban or do we even have one? What day of the week are they scheduled? Because it's, one day it's one time, then it's another time, then it's another time or not at all. If something needs to be fixed, who reports it to the city or who fixes it? Who's to turn on the water and fertilize? How much do we pay monthly? But I saw that was $2,515 a month. Is there a fine for not meeting any contractual obligations? And we would, we are requesting that this goes out to bid because we feel the contract has not been kept. And the landscape is dying and. And the landscape is dying and it needs to be addressed. And we wanted, we would like it to go out to bid to another company. And as you can see, we no longer have grass. I was trying to look for some pictures of what we had when the golf course was maintaining the grass and when. The frontage, I'm only, this is only the frontage. We're not making a bunch of complaints about the median.
30 seconds.
Okay, the median, however, the new part of Riverland, that's a gated community. I think that's been turned over to the city now and that's not being maintained.
Thank you, Patrice. And I just want to mention one thing, I'd like to speak with you at some point regarding this issue on one-on-one, okay?
Okay, sure, great. And I really want to make it clear that Jeff really is interested in doing something. And he said he's got the resources and the want to do it.
Good evening, everyone, Marsha Edick. My first comment is just informational. And this is prompted by a question that was asked at the previous regular city council meeting relating to the amount of money that was spent on the censure. So I went back and I looked and I realized that Andrea will be able to enlighten us on the cumulative amount. But I wanted to know, and I think the person whose name, I'm sorry, I don't know, questioned the, the fees that were paid to the investigator attorney. So I went back to previous minutes and I found the warrants. And so on May 25th, we paid $7,945, which was for an April invoice. On May 31st, six days later, we paid the May invoice and that was $8,577.50. And then the final invoice, or what I believe to be the final invoice, is $10,290. So as I recall, this investigator attorney had given the budget of $15,000. But when you total up those three checks or warrants, it comes out to $26,812.50. Now again, I don't know the cumulative total of what this censure cost. Because of course, Andy Panasco, the previous city attorney, did submit an invoice and I honestly didn't have time to go and see how much we paid for that. And then of course, we have our current city attorney who had to prepare the censure documents and appear at multiple hearings. So hopefully we'll get the grand total. I know Mr. Atlin had said, he estimated somewhere around 40,000. I mean, if we're already at 26,812 and then we need to add in Mr. Panasco's fees and our current city attorney's fees, plus whatever it was that we paid the witnesses for their statements, we're going to exceed $40,000. So I just wanted to throw that out there. My second thing relates to something that occurred at the previous meeting. And I didn't really understand this, but it was an adoption of resolution number 2025-21, authorizing the granting of easements to CDCR related to Woodard Bottom Recycled Water Project. And as I understood it, this was merely to cure a deficiency. Because as I researched it through the previous minutes on the website, this was discussed by then-city council members. It was decided and voted upon by then-city council members. And direction was given to then-city manager, Mr. Rock. He did sign that document shortly before he was let go, walked out, I don't know, in February 2023. We have since come to learn that there's a deficiency with that document. And we kicked the can down the road at the last meeting, saying we needed to know more, there needs to be more discussion.
Got 30 seconds.
A second bite at this apple. It was already discussed, decided and voted upon and instructions given to city council or city manager to sign the thing. So I don't see this on tonight's agenda and I'm wondering what happened to it and what is going to happen. This document needs to be signed, the deficiency needs to be cured. And is this just going to be something else that swept down the road and forgotten? Thank you.
Ms. Edick, if you could, I would be interested in the date of that council meeting for the minutes that you referred, that you referred to where they talked about it previously. Okay, if you, if you could wait after the meeting, I'll get that date, okay?
I'd like to bring up, I don't know about this front the entrance. We have heard about it ever since, I think they started Castle Oaks. How come they don't bring HOA? You guys should license do it, you guys could run your own damn place. Why bring it to us? Why complain to us about it when you guys could run the whole system? And the other thing about that Woodrow Bottom thing is, that was when Mr. Hankin was here. If I remember right, that's one that was voted on. And Hankin illegally was going to cost us about $36 million for his. Over there and I think the state wouldn't accept his signature. That's what it's all about. And they also, there's no record of that pipe even being there. So how can you sign for something that ain't there supposedly? And the city owns it. I don't know why we don't take the charge of it. We don't need to get the CDC and then they can dump the water on us and bypass, do whatever they want, which they have done in the past. Here a while back, they dumped over 100,000 gallons one night in Pond Six and we had to put it on the spray field, which is totally illegal. We don't have a permit to do that. Nobody complained to the state about that, it just burns me, thank you.
So my, my comment is going to be about past meetings as well. We talked about girls softball, two meetings in a row. Dominic did a vote, saying as long as we'll look at it. I don't know why that's not on here, we're talking about some garden now that's popped up. The time before it was rodeo. I, I don't know if Mr. Lee's just not doing it and you guys are making sure it doesn't make it on the list. But he was told in no uncertain terms last time to get this thing rolling. And let's try to see if we can get that $50,000 for girls softball. You guys all talked about it, Jody said he was very interested in it, Dominic and Allison asked about. It's not on the agenda, I don't know how you guys process stuff. But when I owned a business, I wrote down everything I had to do in a day. If I didn't get it done, I carried it to the next one, to the next one, until I finished it. You guys seem to delete things that you don't want to talk about. If George hasn't got the 50 grand, I guess we're just not going to talk about whether he did anything this last two weeks to try to get money for the, for the softball. Like I say, Dominic said, I wish I could divide it in half and get half here and half there, knowing, I think, that George was going to do nothing. Last week he came in, or two weeks ago he came in, acted like he didn't know shit. And you guys talked about it again, George, we need to make a focus on this, let's get it on the plan, get it going. I guess he's reading tea leaves or something.
Please watch your language, okay?
I'm sorry.
Please watch your language.
I'll read tea leaves, I'm sorry. My tea leaves said that I should bring this up tonight because George doesn't seem to be following through. And the instruction that the council is giving him to do.
George, let him talk.
You're paying this man 20,000 over what the budget calls for and he's not doing his job. You guys are specifically telling him what to do and he's choosing not to do it. His, but his salary hasn't been approved. You guys haven't passed the extra 20 grand for last year or this year. And he still snubs his nose at you guys at these meetings. You're telling him specifically what you want to talk about and giving him direction and he does not do it. Now we're going to talk about some garden tonight, so we'll get distracted off on that. But we're not finishing the things that you guys have in front of you that everybody up there said they were interested in. Hey, girls softball, right after the rodeo, let's look at that, let's get it going. And then we just turn a blind eye and let it go. I'm sorry I cuss, but it, it gets frustrating when you're sitting out here and you see things that you think should be checked off the list or at least talked about for two minutes, what's the progress? Oh, I don't have anything, okay, fine, at least we talked about it. But when it doesn't show up on the list, it's like you guys are knowingly allowing these things to happen. You have somebody that's not performing in their job and you're allowing it to happen. I don't know why it's not on here. It took two of you guys to get it on the one meeting and now it's dropping off again. So from what I hear, the city attorney, the city manager and the mayor decided what's on this list, unless two of you vote to say we want it on that list. So why is that not on here? It should be followed up on until you guys decide it's either not going to happen or it's going to happen to my money. So sorry for cussing.
I think the director, that council gave me, if I can respond, Ms. You can, you can respond when you report out, George.
Okay.
Thank you.
Howdy, everybody, I won't cuss because I don't know how, no. That pipeline, people get up and complain about it, but people weren't here when they did the pipeline. I'm not going to mention the guy's name that was ahead of that pipeline because I'll get in trouble because I'll tell you how I feel about him. He put that pipeline in, he made a deal with, back then I called it the ranch. He made a deal with them to take all the water from Mule Creek and take it down there and pollute all the, out of the ground down there. And he just put it in and, and before somebody, I mean, the lady that was up here, I wish she'd go up to the county and do the research. I don't think there was any permits pulled from the county. And, and that's Indian burial ground all through here. And there was nobody there checking for any artifacts. And there was a lot of stuff done that shouldn't have been done. So I mean, before people get up and complain about it, they should do the research. I think how many years ago was that, about six they started on that? Time flies. And I'm just saying, when you, when you guys voted, they just killed it, that's it. Yeah, so people have to do their research before they get up here and complain to the city. Because if you go up to the county and you'll find out there was no permits pulled probably, okay? And another thing, George and the attorney are doing a good job. And the three city councilmen up there are doing a good job, everybody's doing a good job. It's just that people get up here and pick on poor George. And like I said, if it wasn't for George, we wouldn't be getting a half a million dollars a year interest from the bank because before I think we got, what was it? Couple hundred dollars, so he's a very good businessman, so I hate to see anybody come up and scream at him, thank you.
Like Andy?
Dave Livingstone, Wildflower. My question is on the CFDs. And the communication from the city is seemed to be a little bit sparse. CFD used.
This is, this is on the agenda, they'll be discussing it in the coming items.
Oh, I thought, okay, so that will come up because I have a comment on it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment on the agenda? Got one on Zoom, go ahead.
Go ahead, AT&amp;T.
Can you unmute yourself, AT&amp;T? If you want to speak.
Can you hear me?
There we go.
Okay, all right, well, an extra button this time. All right, so anyways, my question is, I, this has to do with what's in your, was in your clothes section, which I, I don't need all your details because you're not going to give them to me anyways. But I see there's something on there for 217 Jackson, which is Creekside. And I hadn't seen anything about it in regards to the city before. Is this something new? Are we, is the city trying to buy it, trying to rent it? In addition to the other two parcels that you guys are working on?
Still up for discussion later, but if it's on the agenda, it's under potential property negotiations. So something, something like you described.
Well, yeah, but it was in your clothes section, which none of us, you know, get to participate in, so.
Those two items were moved to the end of the meeting, so the council hasn't discussed those ones yet this evening.
Okay, so somewhere along the way, someone can tell me whether the city's buying it or renting it or doing something with it?
At, at some point, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else do? All right, we'll close public comment. Move on to consent calendar, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull some items.
Me too. Which ones?
I want to pull two, three, five and six.
Do you want to go first?
No, no motion needed for those.
No motion needed?
I just want to pull the warrants.
They started pulling, okay, okay, start with the warrant.
Well, we're going to.
Vote, vote on the rest of the consent.
Make a motion to approve items one, four, seven, eight, nine of the consent calendar.
Four, seven, eight, nine. We have a second?
One, four.
Minutes, the resolution of the LL Lightning Landscape, number one, Castle Oaks. And then the other ones are parking for the Harvest Fair, parking for Halloween and traffic for Christmas parade. Those ones, I make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, all in pair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Let's have it. Okay, we'll start with warrants.
Ready, go ahead.
Question on page one. $24,000 AWA to, is that the fire station? Or water? I'm.
Just check them out.
It's on page one. That's one of my questions, too. I'm under Water Agency.
I will have to pull that one because I don't, that was one of the ones, if you noticed, there's a highlight, check sent, checks held. So we had five Tuesdays on the paid invoice report, so I'll have to pull that one.
Okay, so is that a single, that's a single invoice?
Yes, it should be the way it's entered.
Okay, yeah, I, I've never seen an invoice that large for that location.
And I can pull it for an update at the end of the meeting.
I see there is another 10,000 on here for the investigator. And did we receive the 50,000 from Acra?
I, oh, go ahead, George.
No, we have to spend the money first and then we turn.
Use a microphone, please, George, so the audience can hear.
We have to spend the money first.
It's reimbursement grant.
Correct. We changed it.
When did they change it?
At the meeting.
At the meeting they changed it? All right. Okay. I do see Eco-Urban is on here to be paid for July and considering the pictures that Treese has showed, I do think that we need to address that contract. It has come up multiple times. We have tried to discern whether it's the maintenance contract or it's another part of the contract. So I, I do believe Patrice has come here more often than she wants to, so. That's, I think, all I have. The, that's a big whopper on the insurance, $450,000.
Yeah, that was on the, at the last budget workshop, it was in the budgeted amount because I had just received that amount. And last year was three something, so it was a small increase, it was an increase from last year. But yes, every July you get all your, you get hit with your.
I was just making a comment, I know what it's for. Thank you. That's all I have on the warrant.
Let me. Let me, uh, same thing, I had the question on the twenty-four thousand for the fire station. These warrants are not the warrants that were online, because, um, I had another couple of questions, um-
Oh, you're right.
I'd like the attorney, that ten thousand dollars to be pulled, I'm not going to vote for that. Um, what's strange is, here's the minutes, actually, and it says what the council approved. So, the council approved seven and a half to fifteen thousand, so you don't have to look very far to see what the council approved for that century, you have it right there in your package. Um, I got a question is, did anybody tell the attorney that he had a fifteen thousand dollar, uh, budget? Does anybody know? Was he told you got to not to exceed fifteen?
He was checking in with us that it would, I mean, we knew it was-
Meaning exceeded it.
Over fifteen.
Right, right.
I'm sorry, did, can you say that again?
As, as it went on, we suspected it was going to be over fifteen.
Okay, but you didn't come back to council for approval on that? Okay.
So, I'd like that one pulled, I'm not going to vote for that. Um, the insurance was a, a shocker, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, is that the best we can do? Do we shop around? Um, did anybody call, like, I know of someone?
NCCSIF, the Northern California City Self Insurance Fund, uh, that we get all our insurance from, um.
That, that's it.
Certainly.
Um, not yet, not anybody's fault, I'm just commenting on it.
Yeah, and that was the number that was in the, at the budget workshop for the budget, that's what, the budget number that was for the insurance.
And then, what isn't here, um, is there was a PG&E true-up for a, um, lift station on Edge Brook. There is no lift station, is anyone here from?
Yeah, it, it was on your first set of-
There's no, there's no lift station on Edge Brook, is there? Okay, is it solar powered? No, so, why are we have a true-up? And then I look back, hold on, because you can respond. Um, I look back at last year, and there was a true-up on West Marlette, and a true-up somewhere else, and I'm thinking, it wasn't such a big number, this was thirty-nine thousand dollars. The last year, it was like ten thousand, so I guess I let that one slide, but why are we having true-ups when we don't have any solar? The only place we have a solar is at the wastewater plant. And if there was a thirty-nine thousand dollar true-up, then they designed the plant too small. I'm talking about the solar array, because that's part of their job when they design something, is to make sure that you don't have it too small, that you pay this giant true-up. Um, I put in two solar arrays myself, and one in my house, so I know a little bit of solar, but why the thirty-nine thousand dollar true-up? We don't even have solar, so I like that one, it's not in here, but it was online. Um, so, I don't want to pay that either until I know more about it.
And I can pull that for the end of the meeting also.
Thank you, that was all the questions I had on the warrants, thank you.
Any questions on the warrants? Mr. Maida?
No, just one comment, I do believe we need to, we need to pay Eco Urban Designs, because we have a contract with them. And, uh, irregardless, irregardless of how it looks, which I agree with Patrice tremendously, it's the contract we have to honor.
You can vote on it, Jody, we don't need to discuss it.
I- Yeah, come on.
Let him, but, no, making his comments.
I would like to go through one meeting and be able to speak, Councilmember Levine, without you interrupting me.
Likewise.
Okay, if you feel that way, that's fine. I have not interrupted you once tonight.
So, we're good with the warrants, any more discussion?
A discussion on the warrants.
Okay. Then, uh, do you want to make a, open up public comment? Any public comment on the warrants?
On your minutes, uh, in there for the May twenty-fifth, would you please spell my name correctly?
I saw that, I saw that.
I am not related to Stacy. Okay, you had it right in the first part, but spelled it with Stacy's last name the second time. I'd appreciate if you change it.
And Uncle Elmer?
I'd like to remind the council, one person can't pull anything, it takes a vote of five of you. One person can't do, just pull things, it's got to be a vote of five of you, thank you.
It's to be voted through, at least three.
Any other public comment on warrants? All right, close public comment on warrants. Want to make, someone want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make one, because I agree with the, uh, pulling back the water, and I also want to check on the true-up. But I do want to, uh, pay Eco Urban.
So, we have a motion to pay the warrants, do we have a second?
Second.
We have first and a second, all in pairs, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
No.
Ayes have it. All right, second item was, um-
Number three.
You want to pull three?
Yep.
Three, five, and six.
I'll make, uh, make this real quick. I have no problem with tax item A, which is the Melrose Bond part of the CFDs, they got to be paid, everybody knows that. As you all know, I do have a problem with B. Um, at the last meeting, I said I would support paying, you know, voting to put B on the rolls, providing at this meeting, we were brought an item on the agenda saying that we would move forward with, um, an area-wide CFD, and that didn't happen. Um, so, I would like to, I don't know if I can change my vote after the fact. I also agree with what Councilwoman Levine said about, you know, it was at a workshop, wasn't noticed, this was put in the consent calendar, which typically just goes through, no discussion. Um, unless somebody pulls it, then you don't get to discuss it. So, I don't like the way this was handled, um, and for that reason, I'm not going to support B. So, I want it broken up, because I'm not going to say no to the CFDs, and I'm going to get our vote anyway, but at least I'm making, you know, my dissent. Um, I would like A's and B's broken up when we come to vote, so that I don't have to vote no, like I just did on the consent calendar, where if you'd have pulled a few things, I would have approved the consent calendar, but without the things I wanted pulled, then, then, um, I can't approve it, so. Uh, when we get to, when we get to, uh, vote on that, I'd like A's and B's separated when the vote gets called for. And again, I don't think it's fair that only a few people are paying fees when everybody should be paying fees, everybody benefits, and I've said that a million times, so. A million and one.
Any other council comments?
My, my comment would be that I agree with this vote, um, I think the people, uh, whether I, I'm not a tax guy, or a taxing people guy, but I believe we need to have this vote, irregardless of, uh, how, you know, some maybe will think it will pan out, but I think what we should, uh, agree, I would like to see it on the agenda, and I'd like to see it on the next agenda. But I agree with Dominic.
We, we could still put that on the next agenda, you could approve this, and we could still prepare an agenda.
Yes, I understand, but, uh, the, the reason being is, you know, I'm not too concerned about it not being on the agenda tonight, because it's, we're not going to be voting on this till June of next year, but I, yes.
Prove this.
Are you talking about, are you talking about the citywide ballot?
Yes.
Okay, so, so he's talking about the citywide ballot, because all these other items- Andrew, if, um-
They kind of tie together, right?
George, can you speak into mic, please?
I think Mr. Maida is talking about, Councilmember Maida is talking about the citywide ballot. Yes, I am, because we were trying to tie these together at our workshop, and what, what we were doing was, we approved the lowest amount of tax at, uh, to, to do these CFDs. But we also gave direction to staff to have on the next agenda for us to discuss and act whether or not we wanted to put a vote on the June two thousand twenty-six ballot, which would cost us much less money, and try to do something sooner regarding splitting and making an even keel throughout the city for CFDs. Okay, so you're specifically talking about the citywide ballot being on the next agenda? Correct. Okay.
And the, the point is, the point is taken, councilman, that it would take staff some time to prepare that agenda item to get you the information to put a ballot measure up, so it would have been a little quick to get it on this agenda anyway, is, I would say, but-
As long as Mr. Atlin particularly knows it's going to take place, uh, then, Andrew, you-
Use a microphone, Jody.
Yes, as long as Mr. Atlin knows this is going to take place, because I guess we had this opportunity before, and it was slipped through, and I don't want to see it get slipped through again, I have a support on this.
Any other council comments?
I have support him on this.
No, I, I think it should be a city, everybody in the city uses the services. Everybody should pay for the services they're using.
I know I talk too much, but one of the reasons I, I'm for this is because one of the reasons we brought this up in the, just so the public knows, we brought this up in the workshop, is because we were having extreme revenue problem. And I'm not believing, like I said, in raising taxes, but, you know, that's just something we, we, we need to look at.
Any other council comments? Open up the public comment.
Good evening again, I, I'm going to have to wing it, because I didn't have time to put my thoughts down on paper. Um, this is patently unfair, in fact, I consider it to be punitive, because it is targeting two particular um, community developments, where the value of those homes is already far greater than many other areas. And unlike our property taxes, which are based on the value of our homes, um, this, uh, is a flat fee, again, intended just for specific communities, even though the services that this is going to fund benefits every single one in this city. There is absolutely no reason whatsoever that every single person in this community who relies on police and fire should not equally share the burden and the responsibility to cover the budget deficit. I'm going to speak with regard to my property. Hey, I bought my house in late twenty-twenty-three, my property taxes are six thousand dollars a year. Okay, that money goes to the county, a percentage of that comes back to this town. Consequently, since I pay what I do, the percentage that I pay toward police and fire is greater than someone who purchased their home for less than I did, or who have lived here longer. I'm not saying that we all shouldn't pay, we should. In fact, I think we should all pay equally, because when it comes time to call for police or fire, we should all share the burden of funding and a critical agency. And I say that this is punitive, because of course, we know the mayor and what he feels about all of us newbies. And of course, the communities that have been targeted are primarily those who have moved here recently and have purchased homes, for whatever reason, whether they're retired and they have more money, or whatever. But again, we are already paying a higher percentage toward these necessary services than someone who has been here longer than us. And to add additional taxes on top of what we already pay mandatory through our property taxes is wrong, it's patently wrong. This should go to a vote, and it should be citywide. Thank you.
I just have to say, all new houses cost the people here money, every time they build a house, it costs us more money. And I didn't have this burden when I was, when I was, I never was on the city council, but I come to a lot of meetings. And before all these big people got here, we had nine million dollars in the bank. And we get all these new people in here, and I can name a few of them, and they blew it in two years. Nine million bucks, and they had that in the bank here. And every new house costs us money, there's studies on it, every new house costs us money. Thank you.
Hello, um, we're, we're talking about the CFDs now, right? Okay.
Correct.
Um, the argument was, has been brought up that, um, people who bought their houses, they knew that, uh, a CFD was going to be attached to their property tax. And it's true, I signed that in, uh, in my escrow papers. But what I didn't know is that half the city doesn't pay the CFD. And if I would have known that, I, maybe I would have, wouldn't have bought a house here, but I agree that the CFDs, uh, uh, you know, needs to be spread out through the, the entire city, because the majority of the money that's collected goes to police and fire, and everybody uses police and fire mostly equally, so. Um, what I want to talk about right now is, um, this vote is not going to take place till next year, so I want to address your vote, uh, that's, that's going to be, uh, I, I assume this evening, uh, to, um, uh, go on with these CFDs and an increase, is that true? Okay. Um, well, let, let me say, my name is Michael Evans, and, um, I've lived in Castle, I live in Castle Oaks, which is one neighborhood that has a C, uh, CFD, a community facilities district. Four years ago, a committee was formed to address some built-in inequities with the CFDs. The inequities are fees paid by some residents of Ione, uh, I was a member of this committee. The fees pay for police and fire services in our city. The police and fire are used equally by all the residents of Ione, as I've said. There are six different CFDs in, in Ione. Three of the CFDs pay approximately four hundred and fifty dollars a year. The other three pay eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars a year. That's a four hundred dollar difference. An automatic increase is built into these amounts of two to four percent, and that's what I'm here to address right now, is the increase. Last year, the city, uh, council voted not to increase this percentage on the CFDs that pay eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars a year. The reason for this vote was to bring parity to all of the CFDs in, in Ione, which is about half the city that has these. If the percentage increase is allowed to continue on all CFDs, uh, equally, the disparity between these amounts will continue to grow. So, I'm urging the council, again, not to increase the percentage on the eight hundred and fifty-seven, uh, dollar a year CFDs. The precedent to do this is already in place due to last year's vote. Um, thank you, um, so if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Was I clear? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Before, before we do anything, like Dominic said, he wants everybody to be even, you ought to get a, you guys better notify a tax analyst guy to come in and explain it to everybody, what you can do and what you can't do. Because I think the contract was made with the contractor that he would build so many houses, and each house would have to pay this, so I don't know if the city can just wipe it out or not. So, you better get ahold of somebody that really knows what they're talking about, like a tax guy that does this kind of work, an analyst, he can figure it all out for you, it's going to cost you some money. But anytime you do want to change anything, it's going to cost you money, everybody has to remember that. Because you guys just can't say, well, like Dominic, we just can't wipe it all out, and then charge everybody four hundred dollars a month. Or four hundred dollars a year, or whatever it is, so, I'm just saying, please, this time, get ahold of a tax guy and get ahold of the, the contractors that are building houses, which left, because when they build a house, they were told the city voted on it, I'm almost positive, that each house would have to pay so much for police and fire. So, I don't think, like Dominic says, you can wipe it all out, I don't think you can, if you, if you do, you might not get in trouble, and you might get in trouble, because he's just saying that, he's probably never talked to, I haven't either, talked to a tax person that deals in this stuff. Because when this was all set up, you had to have a tax guy and an attorney to do it, so please, before you go any farther, you better look into it, please, because don't go get yourself in a big bunch of lawsuits again, thank you. I'm not for it, I'm not against it.
Thank you, Andy.
I pay my taxes and everything, and when I bought my house, if it would have been on there, I'd pay it, and I wouldn't have said a word, just like the sewer bill. You raised it, I didn't say a word, because I know how, I knew you had to do it. Thank you.
Dave Livingstone, may I speak on the CFDs now, Mr. Attorney?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I would just like to go back to what Mr. Evans said about a committee that used to meet about CFD taxes. And for some reason, something changed and that committee apparently doesn't meet anymore. So I thought Councilwoman Lefane brought up a, a pretty good point in, in communicating this to the people of Ione. Because to me, it was a process that could have been pretty much open if that committee met and, and was continuing to meet. The, 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 the CFD committee met to actually assess and make determination of what the CFD rate should be for each district. Now, they didn't make the decision, but their recommendations came to the city council and the decision was made there. But again, that was the purpose of that CFD meeting, to discuss, to review, look at the various tax rates, because each district has different, different needs. And the purpose of it was to support the needs to those departments. If you look up CFD, California Tax on Google, you will see that it says Melrose. That's what it is. And it goes for different purposes. So anyone can do that. Just look it up on Google. Now, I have to go back to, I think that it would be good if that committee were to meet again and have discussion so that they could have review and pick up on all the points that are necessary and then share it with the community. That way, it wouldn't be something that comes along and people look at like the agenda for tonight and say, what, what's all this? So that would be, I think, a wise thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Elmer Rothe, 621 Pleasant Valley Drive, spelled R-O-H-T-E. When I looked at these CFDs and I happen to be part of CFD one, which is strictly lighting and maintenance for the original 211 homes. Okay, and we only pay 5230 a year, okay, for that. But we still pay our taxes for the police and fire on our regular taxes. However, when I look at the number of homes involved here, we're talking about 1,025 homes on these CFDs that are out there right now. In order to get a level thing, level playing field across the entire city, that means everybody in Old Town, everybody in Castle Oaks is going to have to vote for it. I mean, you can't just put a new tax in place or a new CFD in place without it being voted on. Every one of these CFDs required a vote by the people that owned the property at that time. Okay, and that was JTS at that time. I was here for every one of those meetings where every one of those things got voted in and it was stupid. But it happened. And that's what they wanted to do at the time because they wanted to get more money into the city for police and fire. I don't think you'll get it passed if you try and make a CFD for the entire area. Okay, I don't think you're going to get enough people that want to vote for it to vote taxes on themselves. Just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Well, I'm one of the lucky lottery winners that pay $875 a year for this tax. And did I know it when I bought the house? Yes, we knew that we were going to pay it. Did we assume that everyone was going to be paying the same thing? Yes, we did not think that somebody would pay nothing and we'd be paying $875. But, and I read all 5,000 pages of our escrow agreements. However, I do want a good fire department and I do want a really good police department. I've had no problem with that. I want good officers. I want them to be paid well. However, I really don't think that it's necessarily fair that some of us are paying $875, some are paying 450. I know Castle Oaks pays a little bit more because we've got landscaping in there too. And Wildflower doesn't have the landscaping that we do and we should have to pay for that. And as far as what, who pays what in taxes, if you bought your house in 1954 and you bought it for 32,000, well, of course, well, actually that was expensive in 1954. $18,000, you are going to pay less in taxes than someone who bought their house like Marsha pays more money, pays $2,000 more a year than we do because we bought in 13 years ago. However, we also, we're not costing the fire department more. My house, if there's a fire, number one, I have good alarms that go off. And my house has sprinklers that pop up and water comes out when there's a fire. So it make the damage a little bit less for the fire department to have to work on. And I thought hell was going to freeze over when I have to say that I agreed with Larry about an HOA for Castle Oaks. They won't do it. And so now it is the problem of the city. It isn't, it isn't an HOA that can have anything to do with it. I know HOAs bring a whole lot of problem, but I just wanted to, I thought hell was going to freeze over when I agreed with you because I would have rather had an HOA.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I started the clock already, Larry. Better run.
Larry Capodocle, 707 Shaker Lane. What you guys are going to try and do is impose a new tax, call it anything you want, some new tax. I have a friend of mine who's a tax attorney. And, and he said that, bottom line is, it won't take anybody from the city to raise a, a objection legally and you'd lose. You're not going to make somebody pay something they're not paying because somebody else is paying more because you're going to do a redistribution of the wealth, so to speak. What you can do is you could raise everybody's a certain percentage. You can lower everybody's a certain percentage, but you can't take her 600 or 800 and make, and think 200 of it be and give it to me. You can't do that. It, it'll fail the tax laws of California. If they got together and got really, really smart and filed the class action suit, they would win hands down. The city would pay a fortune. So be careful what you do because you're not doing anything different than imposing a tax that isn't there.
Any other, any other public comment? Got anyone on Zoom, chief? All right, closed public comment. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve only A and the CFDs.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, for starters, I'll second that.
We have a first and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No? I just have it? Moving on to?
Hang on, I did say.
I'm confused on this. You said A?
Should we assume you're referring to bullet point one and bullet point three?
I was talking about lines A, like I said before the vote, split the vote into two votes, A and B, because there's two taxes.
Can you, can you go to your consent calendar?
I'm confused, so I won't ever draw there. I want, I need to understand.
Okay, so I'm making, there's two.
There's two.
There's two columns. There's the Melrose column, which is A and.
We have, we have to revisit this motion.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Can you, can you go to the front page of your agenda to the consent calendar?
I'm on the front page, yeah.
There's three, three bullet points, separate CFDs.
Yes.
So we can take it one by one?
There's actually four.
No, just the three bullet points under three.
Yeah, oh, I understand, okay.
Well, what I wanted to do, where it says special taxes, I wanted to split the special taxes into A, which I would, I said I would support that, and B, which I wouldn't support. And that, and what that would mean is that there would be no 2% increase because there's already the taxes going in, so.
Actually, what I think that would mean is there would be no tax.
Okay, well then. That's why I want to split it up.
So currently, you have before you in those three bullet points was the direction that was provided of option number two, which is basically the option that they did last year. Were they increasing the lower ones, but not the top tier one to try to get to more parity? So that was the option number two of direction that was given at the previous meeting. So that is what those three bullet points are for. I think Dominic's point is he's saying he'll approve the Melrose bond part. He doesn't want to approve the tax part. So is that correct?
Yeah, because you didn't bring the area-wide CFD to the council like you said you were going to.
I did not say I would bring it to you.
That's why direction was given to bring it to this meeting tonight so we could vote on it. And it didn't come here, whoever's job it was to do the agenda.
I, I just have a, just a clarification. We keep talking about bringing parity, except some residents have a, a second service. Wildflower doesn't have lighting or landscaping. So you can't bring the group that has only police and fire up to.
Correct. I was using the terms that Mr. Evans said, talked about in the last year in the discussions with the CFD committee.
So that's, that's the difference in the 800 and the 450.
Correct, but even some in Castle Oaks don't pay the 857.
I, I understand that.
Yeah.
But to say that we're going to have parity across the board.
Closed session is closed.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So that's what Dominic wanting to separate it out would do.
Well, if.
Okay.
So my understanding, the way the agenda is written and what his chain is provided in his staff report is you have three items in front of you for approval. And you'll have to ask.
For our last meeting.
Correct. These are based on the direct.
Andrew, this is based on the direction that we gave you at the budget committee, right?
Correct.
Budget meeting. Then I make it, I make a motion that we approve the special district tax.
We'll do, have to strike the first one, attorney? What we do?
In this one, we can include a motion to reconsider the, the prior item that was approved. So we'll consider that rescinded. And I would say that this motion will supersede the last one.
Okay. So repeat that again, please, Vice Mayor. Make a motion.
This is what we discussed and agreed to at the last, that the, most of us agreed to at the last budget meeting. I make a motion that we approve the special district tax at the low rate like we agreed to last, the lowest rate as we agreed to in the budget meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. And I would clarify my vote, which I am allowed to do. I am not in favor of passing a tax because we can't manage our revenue stream. I'm not in favor of taxing the people because we mismanage our funds. And I'm not in favor of raising a tax on specific homeowners, period. I'm not asking a question.
I'm not answering your question. So I just want to clarify for the record and for the vote that basically that motion basically approved the adoption of resolution 25-23, 2025-24, and 25-25.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Andrew.
How about these?
Okay, which one was the next?
Number five.
Number five?
Okay, number five. Let me find it. So there's $103,000 delinquent according to this resolution. But it didn't seem to change from one year to the next. Is that correct? So what was, what was the delinquency in 23, 24? 85? Is that in there? Okay, great. Okay.
And that was the one that was not sent. It was approved.
Right. And, and the reason it wasn't sent is because the finance manager didn't send it. That's what you told me in an email.
Yeah, so I did the research. Jane actually found this a couple of months ago when I brought it to your attention. We did the research. I contacted the county. The county shows no receipt of it. We included all the information of when it was approved by council. The paperwork was signed. All the paperwork is done. The county just shows no record of receiving it, so I don't know.
Yeah, the council did their part. The city manager signed it off and then it didn't get there for whatever reason. And then I looked up last year and I voted no and I thought, wow, couldn't remember. I voted no because I thought that, so here's, if you look at the list of what everybody owes, which comes out to 104,000, there's, and I remember this from last year now, like there's someone here that hasn't paid in 10 years because it's 480 bucks a year. It was. It's not anymore because it just went up. So it's $480 a year. Somebody owes $4,800. They haven't paid their sewer bill. Let me finish. Then you can make me look like an idiot. So someone hasn't paid their bill in 10 years unless it's a commercial one or something. But there's certainly ones here, 1,600 bucks, that's four years. The only penalty that we have is $50. And I remember last year, like, I want to put a penalty in there like everybody else, IRS or whatever. It's like, there is no reason that you should pay your sewer bill because you can just defer it until you sell your house and pay it then and it only costs you 50 bucks. So if you're planning on staying here in your house for five, 10, 20 years, you might as well not pay your sewer bill and just pay it, you know, at closing, right? I mean, that's not enough of a deterrent. And so I'd like to see that, you know, there's penalties and they accrue. And so when you don't pay your sewer bill, and I'm talking about for a couple of months because people have hardships, I get that. But I mean, if you haven't paid your sewer bill in a year and you've been sent letters, hey, your sewer bill needs to be paid, then we got to have something more than $50 penalty. And I know there is one on the month as well because I've been late a couple of times. But it just needs to be a little bit more than that. And then finally, so if anybody sold their house in 2024, they just skated on paying the, the delinquencies because it wasn't assigned to their tax roll. If you sold your house, right? So if you, if you owed $4,000, $5,000 and you sold your house because of somebody not putting this on the tax roll, you just cost the city money. So I like to know what happened to the person that didn't do their job? What happened? Was there any discipline? Was there any reprimand? What happened? And I appreciate that Andrea found all this stuff, so thank you very much. But it seems to me that every single year, I think a couple of times, has been put on the tax roll. But it seems pretty obvious, you know, looking at the signatures and everything, well, everybody did what they had to do, signed it all off. All they needed to do was get sent to the county and potentially, you know, that was an $83,000 mistake. So doesn't sit well with me. And I have no problem with, with six, the next one. I just want to make a comment on, on five.
I have a problem with five and six. The placement of delinquent unpaid sewer services for fiscal year 2023, 2024 should include on the Amber County tax roll. What's missing some bervish there. Same with number six. It's just placement and it's not telling you where you're placing it.
I can give some clarification on the late fees. So you guys had a situation in about four years ago in 2021. It actually happened before that, I think in 2020, because I started in June of 2021 at the front desk, where you had several homes out at Wildflower who, when they got a certificate of occupancy, were never started with a sewer account. So they were like two to three years already in the rears. And you, the city had to give them a big giant bill and didn't charge late fees for a year for them to pan off. So a lot of those large ones came, have been rolling over. So what happens at the end of May 30? So what happens at the end of May 31st, whatever your balance, anything three months over goes to tax roll. What a lot of people don't understand is when it goes to tax roll, by the time you go to tax roll in August, you're not at zero because it never paid that account to zero. It can only do the past due. So a lot of times you'll see those big numbers roll over. As far as the not paying your ta, if you do not pay your sewer bill, and this was when it was based on 4070, I don't know the numbers now, it is $5 the four months and then 10%. And then those late fees roll into your balance like a credit card. So you pay almost $1,000 a year if you do not pay your tax roll. So it's not just $50. The $50 is what the county assesses us and we pass on to them to put it on tax roll. That money is just a pass through, we don't make that money. The money we make is on, or not make, but the money that we charge them to not be late is that 10% is on the monthly, yes. And so the bigger it gets, the bigger that, that 10% gets. Was that the only questions?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other council comments on this item? Open up the public comment. Any public comment on this?
I brought this up about 15 years ago about late sewer. The only ones that I know that got away with it is foreclosures. Somehow or another, I know a guy bought a house next door to, well, across the street from him, and the sewer bill was like $2,000 and he bought the house through foreclosure and he didn't have to pay it. But I sold, I sold a house, you should talk to your realtors around there. I sold a house in Sutter Creek. And before the bank would give the guy the money, they had to make sure the sewer bill was paid, the water bill was paid and everything, and I had to sign the papers. And realtors have a bad habit of just, you know, I'm going to sell this house, this guy, you know. So you guys should talk to your realtors to make sure if they sell a house in Ione that the sewer bill is paid. Because you guys are losing money, I know that. And so the attorney could look into it, there's ways to get around it where they have to pay their sewer bill, so thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Andy, I can address that. Back in 2021, actually Janice passed on a contact at the county and we.
Let her speak.
I, I'm speaking to give clarification to the public. And so what happens now is we go through the county and also the title companies know to contact us. So it usually gets paid through title when it's sold, whether it's a foreclosure or a regular sale.
Thank you, Andrea.
So in order to sell a house anywhere in California, you have to clear escrow. Escrow makes sure that there are no clouds on the title. If there's any kind of a cloud, a sewer bill or anything against the delinquent, that has to be, that has to be executed before the money is transferred and the sale is complete. If these sewer bills are not being sent to the property owner as, as a lien on their title, well, then it never sees escrow. I'm hoping that when we do these lead phase, late fees, they go as a lien on the property and that property can accumulate and it can stay there until the property is ready to sell. But it can't sell without that being cleared.
Thank you, Mr. Caputo.
Any other public comment? I know, chief, nope, we'll close public comment. Someone want to make a motion to approve item five and six?
I'd make a motion to approve item five and six, adding the verbiage at the end of each of those placement on the Amber County tax rule.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Grab a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I just have it. Okay, moving on, we have no public hearing, regular agenda, first item, discussion, action to authorize the city manager to proceed the development of community garden park at the lot located at West Market Street and South Sacramento Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Just to give you a little bit of background, the city of Ione recently purchased two lots in the vicinity of downtown Ione.
Can you speak to the microphone a little closer, please, George? Thank you.
One of the concepts that has been previously mentioned by various community members was the development of a centrally located community garden. In reviewing the concept and potential locations, the city lot located at the corner of South Sacramento and West Market would be the most feasible location for the development of a community garden. It is centrally located and general parking is readily available. The Public Works Department would start the garden with 15 garden beds to begin with, with an estimated cost of $350 per bed. Staff would construct a fence around the garden with material that is already in the city's possession. A wooden bench would be built around the large tree already there. The concept was taken to the most recent Parks and Recreation meeting and was approved for council consideration.
Any discussion?
Staff report here?
Yes.
The Parks and Rec?
No, not from Parks and Rec, this is my staff report.
They recommended that it come to council?
Yes, yes, they did.
They didn't?
Unanimous.
Usually it comes from them. That way we know they vetted it all out.
Any discussion? Council?
I'll wait till after public comment.
Any discussion for any other council?
My discussion is what the, did they, did Parks and Rec look at? Did Parks and Rec look at what is going to cost to irrigate, what is going to cost to maintain public works time? Like, what's the budget for this garden? I mean, what, what's it going to be? I've got the budget for the startup, seven, five, but not the ongoing budget, what, what would that be?
What they approved was the development of the garden itself. So we are getting estimates right now with respect to the construction of the garden beds. The water meter, the water line is already there. If you want me to bring this back, I can bring this back with some more costs, however. But the other, other ideas was thrown around with respect to the use of this park. But many community members have expressed an interest for a community garden in the past. And so we're just trying to accommodate, you know, every facet of the community. I think this would be a, a good location for it. And again, there were other ideas thrown around, especially for this particular location, but also for the Train Depot Park. But the Parks and Rec Commission felt that this was the best use for this park, for this piece of ground. Thank you.
I'd like to throw it back to Parks and Rec to do what they do. This is what Parks and Rec does. They do the bids, they put out RFPs, they do all the legwork for us. They look at a budget, that's all within their power. That's why we have a Parks and Rec Committee. And when they finalized it all, they draft up a staff report and say, this is what we've identified, boom, 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 and this is our recommendation. And so that comes before us and with a nice little bow, and it's much easier for us to approve. This is speculation. We don't, we don't, we don't have anything and it's non-revenue producing. So I would, I would recommend kicking it back to Parks and Rec and letting them do their job.
And the Parks and Rec, if you're, are you finished, council member Lefane? I was just curious, I don't want to interrupt you. I'm the representative of the Parks and Rec Committee, and I know they're all for this. And I spent many years on the Parks and Rec Committee, and I don't remember ever putting anything out for bid. I mean, that, we, we would, we would advise, do research and make a recommendation to the council. And then the council took it from there. I think the Parks and Rec has spoke for what they want. It was quite clear how they feel. And I think that we, that's the last thing we should do, why postpone this any longer? And one comment when it comes, this is one of the lots that we bought with that money that we were going to use for parking. And this is going to be, in my opinion, much better usage of that area, in that area, that community of town. And we, and we can have groups, you know, that can take, you know, like junior high grammar school kids or whatever. We can, and we can incorporate this as a fun community garden. I saw it happen really well in my city of Windsor, the city of Windsor where my daughter lived. So I, I just want to make that comment that I think the last thing we need is to take it back to Parks and Rec. We should discuss, see what the public has to say and go from there.
Dominic, you've sat on Parks and Rec, I've sat on Parks and Rec. Can you explain their powers that they put the RFP out, they look at the bids, they make the decisions?
My experience.
Council member Lefane is not. I was on the Parks and Recreation Committee, Councilmember Lefane, probably at 10 or 11 years of my life. I know a little bit more about than your, one year you put on it.
I have viewed staff reports from Parks and Rec with their recommendations, period.
You got anything, Councilmember Allen?
I just want to add, I'm not, look, first of all, let's please try and move these meetings along without going back and forward. That's everybody. I don't think that we can, I don't agree with Councilwoman Lefane about putting out the bid because I think that Public Works will do the job for the cheapest building, the planters as it is. But my, what I would like to know, I'd like to support this project. But what I'd like to know is what's going to be the ongoing cost, that's all. If it's going to be, you know, a couple of thousand a year, that's fine. I think that's a good investment in the community. But I don't want it to turn into like what happens with Little League, parks, arena, everything else, where we approve something and the next thing we know is three years down the road, we wish that we hadn't approved it because nobody did a, for want of a better term, a business plan. So I just like to know, you know, roughly, what is it going to cost? I think it's a, you know, I don't think, I think it's a good idea. I would like to see some revenue or people are going to get charged a little amount to use the, the garden? Or how are you going to handle, you know, the weight and this? I'm sure it's 15 planters, I think is what I read. So what happens to guy number 17? How do you get on the list, things like that?
So the cost, the cost is negligible, okay? So a, a lot of the, the, the community garden members, they would be taking care of their own gardens. So we start with 15, we have room to go up to 30, okay? But the cost would be negligible, just for the cost of the water. But the other items that were discussed at Parks and Rec were potential farmer's garden, potential activities in that area. There's a lot of people that walk in that neighborhood, so that concept of the bench around the tree was brought up. So again, it serves another section of Ione. So again, that's one of the reasons why I think the Parks and Rec supported this, voted to approve it.
At the next Parks and Rec Committee, I, I think it might be a wise decision, and I would be happy to do it, to ask them to do some research, how other cities have done it. And, 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 you know, as far as, you know, from the questions you're asking as far as who, who's going to have the privilege, I call it a privilege, of be able to do this or not, because we want to make sure we do this equitable and fair. So that, that would be something.
Yep, so what, like I said, I, I think the first step is, 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 I think you have the drawing there. We have the fencing material, the parks and, the public works, as you can see, I have great confidence in their, in their ability to get this done at a very minimal cost, so.
Councilmember Mitchell, you have anything to, to add?
Oh, I like the project. I would like to see P and L obviously on it, but that's speculative at best anyway. Certainly, City of Jackson's gone through this and had, had success. I think it would be a nice thing for the community, a nice use of the space. I could see wanting to get more information, but, but the concept's solid.
I think it's a great idea. Parks and Rec is just an advisory committee, it always has been. When I was mayor, the first time we were going to build three of these parks and it never got completed. But anyhow, I'm, so with that said, I'm curious to see what public has to say, public comment? Open up public comment?
I haven't seen what you all are looking at or the extent of what you have. I like the idea. Do you know what this is going to cost? Is there a dollar amount in the documents that you're looking at that we haven't seen? And I think it is important, I hadn't thought of that, but there is the cost to maintain it, whether it's just water or, you know, whatever. I think that would be important. And I've come to enough of these meetings and I think it's Selena, isn't she on the Parks and Rec? And, and so she came here and did the presentation for Train Depot Park, which didn't go forward for various reasons, but, you know, she did a very nice presentation. And it would have been nice for Selena or, you know, someone else on that committee to have made a presentation for all of you and us sitting here in the audience so that we can be better informed before just kind of blindly, it sounds like, maybe approving something. I, I do think it would be important so that we don't end up in a situation of, gee, I wish we hadn't voted for that because, you know, it wasn't what we thought it was going to be. So maybe the idea would be if, does it really matter if it's pushed out to the next meeting, added to the agenda, and then someone from Parks and Rec, Selena, makes a nice presentation? And if she's available, she could do that for all of us here.
Any other public comment? Got someone on Zoom, you said, chief? Two? Okay, go ahead on Zoom.
Diane Ratten, I, I think conceptually this is a, a good idea. However, what you've got in front of you is only that, it's conceptual. There's no definitive information about the ongoing maintenance for one, the water costs for two, how the beds are going to be allocated, what the structure of that is going to look like, who is going to manage that part of the, the park, because basically it's a park. And without those kinds of concrete information and data points, I, I think this is a very premature vote on the part of the council. You can, you know, you push it back to parks or city manager, do the legwork, you know, find out how, what's the structure going to look like? Because you, you're all of a sudden going to have 25 people walk into City Hall and say, I want a bed. And you have, and there's no rules or, or plan or anything on how that is going to be allocated out. I think before the council has a vote on this, you should have some very clear plans as to the actual cost, the budget item that it's going to be on and what that's going to look like going forward. Our water costs are not going down, they're only going up. And, you know, how, how this is going to be structured as far as the city's management of the actual beds and the usage. Thank you.
Next person on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm back again, I'm assuming that this is the section that you guys were referring to and I dialed in earlier about 217 Jackson, which is Creekside. But this is not on Creekside, this is that little lot that's a lot across the street, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so back to my original question, which really doesn't have anything to do with this, is 217 Creekside something we're also looking at? Because there's negotiations based on your agenda for terms and payments and all that, which I don't care about the details yet because they're not public. But is that a whole separate thing?
Yes, that's a.
That we don't, we have no, nobody seems to have any information on that I've not heard about before.
It's a separate subject.
Okay, so is there going to be a time when the city's going to be told what it's, what it's all about?
Yeah, at the end of the meeting, we're going to go back in the closed session and then we'll report out after that.
Okay, all right, well, thanks. Well, I, I like the idea of the garden and I do agree that, you know, a little more detail would have been super handy, but the idea for the community is a good thing because we have a lot of people that, you know, they don't buy vegetables at the store because they can't afford them, so anyways, keep that in mind, thank you.
Anyone else, chief? No, we'll close public comment? Someone want to make a motion?
Well, this is near and dear to my heart, I recommend authorized staff to proceed in development of the community garden park.
Do we have a second?
I'd second it with more, but I'd like to get some more information at the next meeting. Like for number one, what size water meter are we going to be required to have here? Because.
It's already got one on it.
It's what, what, okay, it already has a meter, what unit, you know what size it is?
Probably three quarter.
Okay, not four, okay.
It was a residential lot, if I remember. So we have a motion. So we have a motion with strings attached, how we put that? And how do you want to put your?
Or what about just direction? I think we all agree on the concept, direction. Can you take it back? Give us a little bit more detail so we can vote on it and approve it next meeting?
I'd go with that.
I think, I, I personally think we can, why wait two weeks? And we can ask, uh, Selena to, do her presentation, um, after the fact, and I think we'll all be quite pleased.
I would recommend if, if so agreeable, uh, to approve the, the concept and we will come back later with all more information, but approve the development of the concept.
The night move, we approve the concept.
Yeah, we have a.
So that means no works.
Do we have a second?
Or anything.
We're just going to develop the concept and we'll bring back more information with respect to pricing and so forth.
We have a motion on the floor.
That sounds good, George.
Do we have a second?
Didn't Jack second it?
I actually said I moved to approve the concept.
Well, that's a same motion.
Do we have a second?
If we need a second, I second.
Have a first and a second. Hold on, favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Aye, have it. Okay. Moving on to item two. Um, update on water balance for city's wastewater treatment plant and tertiary treatment plant. Catherine Geese, uh, West Jost.
I believe she's on Zoom.
Hi Catherine.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
All right, great. Um, I actually have a couple slides to share, um, if I could be given sharing access.
You're up, Donner.
Oh, okay, um, that might not be the latest version, but I can probably work from that if that works. Um, okay, go ahead to the next slide. Um, yeah, so I'm here today to talk about the, the water balance update and then just a quick update at the end on the Title Twenty-two report and the cleanup and abatement order. So, um, with the water balance, um, you know, the city, as you likely recall, was required to submit two water balances in December twenty twenty-four. Um, one was a combined water balance with ARSA, which addressed the ARSA system as well as the Castle Oaks, uh, golf course and treatment facility. And then the city had its own individual water balance. Um, the regional board submitted comments to the city on that in February twenty twenty-five. Um, the, for the combined water balance, there were several comments, but pertinent to the city with respect to that. Uh, there were comments raised regarding overflows from the ponds that are on the golf course, and they stated that those were not allowed. And, um, with respect to the individual water balance, they indicated that no percolation from ponds six and seven were allowed. Um, following the receipt of that letter, the city submitted a revised water balance, um, which was then reviewed and we received comments in May twenty twenty-five. So the May twenty twenty-five letter, um, basically, uh, reiterated the regional board's concern about the, um, discharges from Pond I of recycled water or the potential for those discharges. And, um, in the May twenty twenty-five letter, the city required, the regional board required that the city submit a work plan by August eleventh. And, uh, that work plan must also detail actions that will be taken. So I'm here today to give you an overview of what that work plan is. We're in the process of preparing it on behalf of the city. Um, so the next slide, I'll, I'll get into some details on that. So this diagram shows, um, the relationship between the Castle Oaks Water Reclamation Facility and the ponds on the golf course. So there are uh, seven ponds, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, sorry, nine ponds, I can't add. Um, count, so nine ponds on the golf course, A through I. Uh, typically recycled water is only directed into Pond I, which is then pumped out and used for irrigation on the golf course. However, there is the ability for recycled water to enter Pond A, which then overflows to B, C, D, E, H, V, F, G, H, all the way to I. Um, basically interconnecting all the ponds. Um, the concern is, is that Pond I also has an overflow to Mule Creek. And that all of the ponds on the golf course receive local runoff from the golf course and to some extent, a little bit from homes surrounding the golf course. So come winter season, the gate from Pond I is opened so that the overflow of storm water can be discharged out to the creek, um, preventing flooding, um, within the golf course and from the homes. Um, and the regional board generally promulgates what some people refer to as called a one molecule rule. But that is, if there is any recycled water in any of those ponds, it gets mixed with the storm water and then it gets discharged to the creek, and that's considered an illegal discharge. Historically, the city did implement a practice where, uh, Pond I was lowered with recycled water and potable water was added. And that water was then diluted the recycled water so that when a discharge occurred, there would be less potential for pollutant to be discharged. But even the discharge of potable water is considered an illegal discharge to a creek. That's not something that's allowed. So the city needs to move forward with a project that basically eliminates this potential. And this is a very similar problem that occurred, uh, with Rancho Marietta. Um, they had a similar water reuse system on a golf course constructed around the same time as yours. And they went through this similar process, um, where they basically had to disconnect their recycled water ponds from the stormwater system. So the work plan here is based on the same approach that worked for them. Next slide. So this is just an overview of the, the lakes, just to give you an idea of where they're located out in the area. Next slide. So in order to address the problem, Lake I overflow to Mule Creek needs to be removed. Um, and then in order to allow storm water to keep moving through the system, Lakes A through H should be disconnected from Lake I. And then, um, and Lake A should no longer receive recycled water. So then A through H would become storm water only lakes. And then the overflow from Lake A could then be disconnected to the outfall to Mule Creek so that the stormwater discharges could continue. So basically we're isolating Lake I from the stormwater system and using it only for recycled water use. Next slide. So this diagram shows how the system would work in the future, pretty simple. Um, Castle Oaks recycled water would go into Lake I, which would go to the golf course, and there would be no overflow from that lake to any, any water body ever. And then storm water would enter Lake A as well as B through H, and that could then overflow to Mule Creek, um, as needed in the winter months. So in order to complete this work, uh, the first step is an engineering analysis. Um, there's two key, um, aspects that need to be evaluated. Um, one is that the local runoff to Lake I, what, what would the water level in Lake I need to be at the end of the irrigation season so that when runoff comes into that lake, which it will, just from surrounding lake area, it won't result in an overflow? And that information needs to be documented into an updated Title Twenty-two report and submitted to Regional Board and D W for approval. In addition, look, we need to take a look at the stormwater system around Lake, Lakes A through H and just confirm that the modifications that are being made won't result in any flooding in the local areas. And then ultimately to design the new pipelines and the connections to the stormwater system. So between now and when this project can be complete, because it's going to take a couple of years to complete the planning and design, as well as just to get the funding together to pay for it. Um, the interim actions that we're proposing would be to eliminate all recycled water discharges to Lake A so that essentially recycled water is only being contained in the Lake I. Eliminate potable water discharges to Lake I. And then at the end of the irrigation season, instead of relying on potable water to meet irrigation demands, there needs to be more close coordination between the city, CalRiff staff and golf course staff so that the water deliveries better match the demands. And with an effort to basically have Lake I as low as possible at the end of the season with the recognition that we'll never be able to completely empty it, but we will try to empty it as much as possible and we won't fill it back up again with potable water. We'll just try to keep it as low as possible. So the first year, it's, it might take a little bit of work and effort to get and figure out the right practices. But again, this is just an interim measure until the permanent fix can be put in place. Next slide. Um, so we're proposing a three-year schedule to complete this work. Um, that's basically, uh, both having to do with timing as well as funding availability. Um, so for this fiscal year, the key is to submit this work plan, which is due August eleventh, and then to complete the studies that are needed to define what the project looks like, what the, where the pipelines need to go, what the sizes they need to be. And then these hydraulic studies needed to confirm that the stormwater can be managed appropriately. Um, so the idea, and then that project would also define the cost of the improvements that are needed. So effectively, we're talking about a preliminary design. The thought is, is that we submit the work plan in August. We meet with the regional board in September and confirm their acceptance of the work plan and the approach. The city would then, uh, initiate a task order in, in the approximate October timeframe, uh, to do the studies as well as the modeling and preliminary design. And then that would be completed by April of next year. Then in, um, fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, um, the, so starting next year, at the beginning of the fiscal year, the city would initiate design, which would take, you know, probably about eight to nine months to complete. Um, so that would be completed during fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven with the idea of construction beginning, um, in, starting in fiscal year twenty-seven, um, probably near the springtime, um, and then continuing on, uh, through, uh, to, uh, November of twenty twenty-eight. So, um, the current cost estimates without having done any design or knowing very much about the system, um, out there, because I'll, I'll caveat that there are, the existing drawings of the golf course pond system do not have the level of detail needed to really fully understand where the pipes are, how, how long they are, what exactly needs to be fixed. So we're pretty high level estimates, but we, the preliminary design, the studies and preliminary design, we're pretty confident in that number, about sixty thousand dollars. Uh, the design efforts, we believe should be in the hundred and fifty to two hundred range. And then construction would be three to five million. And that would include, you know, services and construction and all the related, um, soft costs, environmental analysis that need to support the work. Um, and again, the first step, the preliminary design phase would better, would more clearly define the cost for the next two steps. Um, so as far as the individual water balance goes, um, I believe the council's aware of this, but I just wanted to give a quick update that the, um, as mentioned, the regional board had said that the percolation basins could not be used as part of the water balance. So when we remove those from the water balance, we identified there's about seven hundred acre feet of water per year that must be stored and disposed of in an alternative location, uh, to account for the loss of capacity from the percolation basins. Um, there have been discussions with the board staff as well as Office of Enforcement to develop a pathway towards compliance. And I understand the se, the city is currently seeking funding to complete the required studies to define where and how this water will be disposed of. And at this point, there had not been a timeline established for this work. Regarding the Title Twenty-two report, uh, that report was submitted in May of twenty twenty-five. We did receive comments on the tracer study report, which was just the tracer study portion that, as you guys recall, we did back in the spring. Um, it was fully approved with some minor, uh, rec, requirements. One is that a flow meter be installed in the influence to the contact basin. Um, this actually does benefit the city, even though it does have a, a cost upfront. Because with that flow meter in place, the city will have the capacity to treat up to the total of one point two million gallons per day through the chlorine contact basin. Where without that flow meter, we had to estimate and we were looking at one point two coming into the plant. So we're losing some of that water to backwash. So it allows for more treatment through the treatment plant, which benefits the city if you're looking at trying to treat more flow and getting rid of those percolation basins. Um, there's also some recommended programming for the chlorine contact basin operations. So my understanding is Justin is already working on getting those in place. Um, and once they are, we will report that back to the, to the state. Um, we haven't had any other input on the Title Twenty-two report besides that. Next slide. Finally, the cleanup and abatement order, um, that, uh, order addressed the historical biosolids that were stored south of the treatment ponds. Um, a draft of the, uh, required report was submitted back in the fall. And the regional board, uh, late last year required additional monitoring in quarter one and quarter two of twenty twenty-five. That monitoring was completed and we are in the process of, um, revising it with, uh, anticipation to submit by the end of this month. And that should close that item. And that's, that is it for my update. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Catherine. Any questions from council?
Uh, go ahead, Dominic.
Yeah, I got a few. First of all, um, typical operation on the golf course is the water goes into Pond A. That's, that's how it's done. It only goes into I when we get behind, well, then when the course gets behind. For example, when the irrigation is about the same as what the tertiary plant puts out, they can't wait for it to run from A to I, so they, then I. So that's, that's incorrect. That's not, that may be how it's been working this year because we started off behind, but that's not how it typically.
That's, I, my understanding is the opposite of that, which is what's documented in the Title Twenty-two report and what we were informed by golf course staff that I, which is what pumps, which, which is what, where the irrigation pumps discharge from to the golf course is where the flow goes into. And flow only goes into I when the golf course can't keep up.
Right.
Goes into A when the golf course can't keep up. And that's, that's been corroborated by the golf course multiple times. But I'm happy to go back and talk to them about it again.
It's, that's backwards, but I is the one up on, um, Castle Oaks Drive and I is the one by the pump station. So that's, you got it backwards or someone told you wrong. Um, the, um, there's a freeboard in Lake I, so there's a freeboard there. So it only spills, of course, when you exceed the freeboard. So that's why they try and keep, uh, the freeboard below. And there's also a way that when it does start getting up there, they can move that water back into another, um, pond or you can turn the irrigation on. You can almost drain that lake in two nights of irrigation. So that's one of the ways of keeping the freeboard is to irrigate. Um, even though you may not need to, because it's winter, you could still irrigate and move water. Um, our thing was, there's also storm drains that run through the course that runs into that wetland, which runs into Mule Creek. So the storm drains run into Mule Creek. That was put in in around two thousand and five by J T S to save the city from building another lift station there on, um, Castle Oaks Drive. Uh, and then are you saying that Pond six and seven percolate seven hundred acre feet of water? That's, there's no way. That's way too high. I mean, it's more like twenty-five acre feet. So is that, was that correct? It's seven hundred acre feet if we shut?
In a year, correct.
In a year. It percolates seven hundred acre feet. That's double what the golf course uses. Like, that just can't be right. So those are my comments. Thank you.
It's also rainfall capture in a one in one hundred rainfall year.
Any other council comments or questions?
I, I would like an update, um, on all the task orders that we have going for West Jost. Um, we have many. Um, and I don't know if they ever get resolved, um, and finished. Um, I know, there's at least six and they're million dollar task orders. Um, so I would like an update from staff, where we're at on all their task orders.
The comment I have is I, uh, have concerns after hearing from Councilmember Atlin. Um, he has extreme knowledge of the golf course and, uh, I defer hate, I defer to him on his knowledge on these things.
My comment, Mr. Mitchell? Um, hold on to your chair, Dominic. I'm gonna agree with Dominic. It is uh,
My god.
Lake. Say that in the microphone, sir. Um, Lake I, um, it's much better if it's gonna spill over, just go ahead and discharge it on the golf course. It's way cheaper than spending all this money to deal with this. And I, I believe Dominic correct also on the, the seven hundred acre feet. That doesn't make any sense to me at all, so.
Wow. What time is it?
Um, I will just comment that the regional board will not allow you to irrigate during the winter months on the golf course. So that's not an acceptable approach to preventing overflows from Lake I.
Can you put it in another pond and keep recycling it?
What, what I meant by that is you could turn a sprinkler on and you point it into a lake. That's what was, you know, one of the ways we could move water. So you, you're not actually irrigating, you're basically discharging into one of the other lakes.
So all, all of the, the lakes are interconnected, right? What A or flows to B, C, D, all the way down to I. So if, if I is full, aren't the other lakes also full?
No.
No.
Because what's bad about that system is, so the lakes are connected, but they're connected almost at the surface. I mean, it's like two feet down.
It's at the freeboard line, which is stupid.
Yeah, and so you basically can only take the top two or three feet off the lake every year and the rest of it just remains there. So it never actually transfers. Um, but you could also isolate the lakes and we did it one year to help out Arsa. Um, you can, I mean, the correct way to do it is put a valve in. But you could put a valve in, or we used to use a giant stand pipe. You could stop the water transferring, but the water only transfers when it gets to a certain level. Uh, I would recommend that you met with the superintendent over there who knows even more.
Well, we could, um, so for, for this study, no, this is good input. Um, if, if the lakes don't all fill with storm water in a one and one hundred year storm event, which is what the regional board standard would be. And there is indeed storage capacity. And you could basically cut off the discharge from Lake I to Mule Creek, which is what they're gonna require. Um, if you can cut that discharge off, then um, and just recycle the water within the lakes and we can show that that is possible, then that you could definitely do that. Um, but I think, I don't think they're going to accept anything short of eliminating the potential for discharge, which would require bifurcating that, that pipe from Lake I to Mule Creek. And that could happen, um, but I think you'd wanna do the hydraulic studies to make sure that you don't result in flooding on the golf course.
Well, this is a, a, a new action item anyhow. This is information only, so.
Correct. But it sounds like, I guess what I'm hearing is you, you're asking that we take a look in this study or that the city take a look at this study and in this work plan at whether the storm water can be contained within those nine lakes without an overflow. And therefore you wouldn't need the infrastructure, the overflow infrastructure. You would just utilize the existing system to contain all storm water every year. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that was why we had that flush plan, which the regional board said they never gave authority to do. And I gave you the letter showing that they gave you to do that. So basically.
You shared that with them.
Right, and that was by Julio here at this wastewater plan. He put the plan together when the city was running its own plan. And it was basically, he got the dilution down to like forty to one or something like that. Yeah, and, and it was always gonna get more diluted. The more it rained, the more diluted. And that was.
Right. And I, their, their concern is that it d- it doesn't matter whether it's diluted or not. Any discharge of recycled water or potable water to Mule Creek is not a permitted discharge.
What about?
That's, that's, that's the position. That's what we have to.
Sure. What about stormwater?
Stormwater you can discharge, yes. But potable water and recycled water you cannot. So we have to demonstrate that there's no possible way of having those discharges occur in the future. Um, so as long as we're putting recycled water in Lake I, there cannot be a discharge from Lake I to Mule Creek.
Right, so they're no longer accepting the twenty twenty, the two thousand and three.
No.
Plan.
They're no longer accepting that plan. They, they have seen it.
Right.
They are aware of it, um, but they are not accepting it.
Are they entertaining any other opt- offers from outside sources?
I'm not sure. I'm understanding the question.
Are they looking into uh sending tertiary water elsewhere?
The regional board?
Yes, as an option.
The city can propose to send tertiary water to, you know, anything, but I think, you know, the city would have to define that infrastructure and how the recycled water would be contained to, so that there would, you know, meet all applicable requirements for, you know, no discharge to surface water.
No, I mean sending it to another facility.
Y- yeah, I mean, the city doesn't have the infrastructure to send recycled water to another facility. So I think if the city wanted to propose something, um, it would make, the first step would be to define that infrastructure and what is proposed to be constructed or, you know, move that forward and then submit a plan and then the regional board would approve it. But at this point, there is no, there is no plan or, you know, well, identified location.
There was, there was a discharge permit um in June that identified the city of Ione on their permit. Um, but it was removed. So that's the question I have is it, it seems like we are once again under the scrutiny of the water board. Um, and it appears there are other options floating around um at the water board. So, but it doesn't sound like you're aware of those, so.
I haven't heard about a discharge permit in June. Nobody informed me of that.
Oh, I can send it to you.
Okay. I'm good. Happy to take a look and tell you what it um, it means. Yeah, thi- this came directly out of the um, the water balance analysis and, and of course, it's also documented in the Title twenty two report. Um, along with the letter and the approval from the regional board for the pre, the current actions. Um, but the regional board has made it clear in no uncertain terms that um, the discharge from Lake I, the recycled water is, is not, cannot occur. But we're happy to take a look at, um, you know, as part of this analysis, is there, you know, is there another strategy of just being able to contain all the storm water and all the recycled water and just eliminate that pipe? That would certainly be the cheapest approach.
Any other council questions, comments? No comments. Open up the public comment. Any public comment on this?
Uh, I think some of them ponds, I don't know exactly how deep they are, but if they're over twelve feet deep, you're getting groundwater from the prison. You take, you look at your chart on the, on for the testing the wells. Well, one, which is the very first one, the deepest I've seen it is twelve feet. It actually goes back up to six feet. So them ponds, uh, out in the flat, now not up on the hill, but the ones in the flat. If they're over twelve feet deep, they're getting water from the prison. That's groundwater. It's coming off. Their spray field is on pure ass clay. Clay don't absorb water. It runs off of it. And if you don't believe me, go up there and check. It's pure clay. So all that water they're spraying is either going in Mule Creek or in our groundwater. So it could contaminate them ponds and nobody wants to check it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Anyone on Zoom chief? Nope. Close public comment? Okay, this was just a information item. We'll move on to item three. Uh, discussion authorization to install chlorine contact basin and influent flow meter at tertiary treatment plant. Justin.
Good evening, council. My name is Justin with Waterstone and uh we manage your wastewater treatment facilities. Kathy is on Zoom with me tonight. Uh, so there are a million other projects at the tertiary plant I'd rather, you know, spend this money on. Uh, but the DDW is requiring we put in this new flow meter. Um, so I'll very unenthusiastically read you reasons why a flow meter at the start of the chlorine contact basin benefits us in the treatment process. I don't know, might differ from what Catherine has already explained. Um, current setup lacks direct flow monitoring in the chlorine contact basins. Control equations rely on accurate flow data to maintain required disinfection. Uh, using influent flow, which is the one we fixed back in January. Instead of actual chlorine contact basin flow leads to overestimation of flow rate, risking underchlorination and potential Title twenty two violations. Low flow rates show or baffling, so accurate monitoring is critical to ensure mixing and compliance. Regulatory recommendation from DDW, install a flow meter and notify both DDW and Central Valley Water Board before doing so. Uh, so there you have it. Again, this is something that DDW is requiring and they are wanting us to come as soon as possible or to come over as soon as possible and go over the project. Uh, so I'll let you ask me any questions I might be able to answer and then you guys can take your vote on it. Um, yeah.
Any council questions for Justin?
I have uh two. Number one, in your proposal here says by accepting this proposal from Waterstone Services, you agreed to treat this as confidential information. And now it's been plastered all over the agenda for the whole world to see. So not sure, you know, what good that was putting that in there. Um.
We won't get mad about it.
If the, well, you may, if it goes out to bid and someone looks at this and underbid you, then you'd be very mad. So that's why these things shouldn't be put on the agenda. Anyway, um, if the DDW is asking for it, then I got, I don't like it, but I don't like what Kathy just said, that we gotta spend three to five million dollars because now all of a sudden the regional board doesn't like what they've been doing for twenty five years. So if the DDW wants this, then, then fine. I would just ask that, and, and then the other one as well, that we do get a breakdown of the invoices when, when you do this.
Okay.
Uh, just for transparency. So, but I am, you know, we got no choice once again.
I, I agree. We have no choice. I was there today and um I'm seeing good progress also and uh this is, this is another step.
Any other council comments, questions? No. When was this brought up? Like what triggered this as to like the last couple of years? What's, what has changed?
Uh, just, just uh in doing this new Title twenty two, this is just something they.
That triggered something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, open up to public comment. Any public comment on this? Zoom chief? Nope. Close public comment? Okay, uh, someone want to entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion to authorize to install the chlorine contact basin influent flow meter at the tertiary treatment plant.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No, and I'd like to have my dissent on record. Um, we don't even have a budget yet. Um, and as I have said in the past, I will not approve any purchase without documentation. And um, we have made massive capital improvements out there at that tertiary plant with no documentation. So come time when we get our audits done, accounting for all of those capital improvements is gonna be quite challenging since the city will have no records.
All right, uh, next item, uh, last item actually. Uh, item five, discussion direction regarding social media policy for.
Number four.
Oh, wait, sorry, I missed one, sorry. Discussion authorization to commence interconnection project for wastewater treatment plant and tertiary treatment plant. Sorry about that.
Okay, yeah, you guys are all here. Definitely a change in my tone for this project. Um, this one I really support. Uh, I wanna start by saying uh that I have not yet been given any direction on whether or not I will begin to take CDCR water in the coming weeks as Arsa begins to run out for the year. Um, and so regardless of what is happening with that, uh, you all should keep in mind that a water supplying partner for a golf course is planning to be out of the partnership in the next five years. And if I had to guess, I would think that other one, the other one is as well. Um, so anyways, uh, here we go. Uh, I wanna walk you through on screen a major setup, um, that's a major step forward for the city of Ione. Uh, this is more than just another infrastructure project. This is about taking control of the town's future, becoming more self-reliant with our water and continuing the momentum we built over the past year. We spent the last year giving everything we've got to the tertiary plant. It's paid off. We got to irrigate the golf course. Uh, we got all the new equipment in there that was compliant for the, you know, DDW. Um, things are now on the right track there. So now I think it's time for us to shift some focus to the wastewater treatment plant and finally get to connecting the dots literally and strategically. Um, one of the biggest challenges we faced with the tertiary project was always where's the money coming from? And I get that. Uh, but tonight, if we move forward, we can officially say that the wastewater treatment plant will be physically connected to the tertiary plant by the fall. Uh, let me show you on screen what this interconnect project will achieve this year and new opportunities it opens for the future.
So, um, there's been a lot of talk over the years. I think it's been a twenty year discussion, a lot of ideas. Uh, I began looking at all those different ideas and um, you know, one which. Class or, or as uh, using pond five's existing pump station, which I thought was a great idea. Uh, so I piggyback on that, you know, initially people were looking at going in this direction around. Um, I'd like to take it straight through the plant, uh, use the existing um, pipeline at the front that we're using now to pull from the lagoon back here. And uh, we put a pipeline straight through the plant and connect it into pond five's uh pumping station to help us in the short term uh interconnecting the plants. Uh, what this can mean for the future, as council member McFane brought up, uh, there is somebody that put us on their permit. It was the US mine. Um, in the future, you know, we can bring this back this direction after Rover. You have the possibilities, I'll, I'll further discuss. I just wanna kind of point, point this highlighter around of, of what uh possibilities are. Um, so step one, of course, taking the water over the tertiary plant, getting our own plant uh on the Title twenty two. Uh, begin using our tax dollars for ourselves, right? Um, so now it's going over there. Now we're treating water. This in the short term will help me in the winter months because we're not supposed to be using. I don't use this one anymore and I'm still using this, but I'm not supposed to be. Um, so what I can do during a big storm, you know, is you utilize this pipeline that we might put in. If you balance the water throughout the tertiary plant, make it a revolving circle right here, right? Send the water over there. It's coming back over here. All in all, we're keeping good water in our plants and uh wherever it can go in the future. Future stuff. This is phase one, right? Put the pipeline as phase one, easy. Getting across the plant. Now we're pumping water over there. Phase two, you know, we, we do this year after year, put the money back into our uh existing facilities. Um, we line these ponds, what I'm proposing. We line pond six. Obviously, we cannot use it to purdue anymore. Now we can put a pipe into pond five. They're both balanced with each other. Uh, the winter months, I fill up six. Summer months, put it back into five and it syphons through the pump right here, both feeding the uh irrigation fields, fields and possibly partnerships, right? There's always rubber bottoms that we discussed. There's obviously the mine. My hope in the future is building a pipeline through the town, setting it up to the parks. Um, that's another discussion tonight, right? We need money for irrigating these new parks that we're talking about, new gardens, use our own water. Um, so now we have pond six taking on the winter water. What we can do also in the future, you know, we're talking about storage of water. We can line pond uh, pond seven as well. We can bring the water back around. We can tee off a pipeline here and there's existing infrastructure here that allowed water to come out of pond seven. Now we can put water back into pond seven and it's. And it's lined, so now we can store the water in there, millions, millions of gallons, sitting there waiting to go for, you know, whichever direction whoever wants it. So not to confuse tonight, what I'm proposing is what I'm calling phase one. Tapping it upon five, using the pumping stations and through the plant directly down the road. End to the, the line I'm using right now with my four inch fire hose and bringing it over here to the tertiary plant. I'll finish my presentation over here.
With this connection in place, Ione will be control, in control of where water goes. It'll be tertiary treated, meaning it meets strict Title 22 standards. It's not just recycled water. It's reliable, a sought after resource, especially during drought cycles. This means Ione's tax dollars going back to its residents. We can irrigate our own parks where families play and gather, which is what I just talked about and it was a discussion tonight. We can help fuel growth, not just in housing, but in jobs and business. We may have even have the option down the line to sell water to farmers, again, going back to pond seven, having it stored in there. You know, that can become something that, you know, people in the area are, become aware of and want to tap into and use for their, for their own farms. And we're using the wastewater fund strategically to execute projects that serve long-term needs of the city. This type of planning that helps us get out from under the cease and desist order that's hung over the plant for more than a decade. I think it's been around, Dominic and Mayor Rose and Councilmember Atlin can help me out with that. I think it's been around for, yeah, over, over 10 years at this point. 22 years, so 22 years. So, you know, I'm, I'm just proposing, proposing this to, to make moves forward. This is something, again, let the regional board permitting came out. And we did a walk through myself, Debbie and George and discussing this and they were, they were really on board with this. And I think this would help pull us in the right direction of getting out of that. I know that over this last year, I've come in here more than once with the sky is falling scenarios, but you know, let me be clear, those were inherited issues. Situations out of my control, just like the new flow meter requirement I mentioned earlier, not optional, but required for compliance. But this interconnect project, this is different. This is something I personally advocated for since day one. And as some of you here can confirm, when this project was first proposed, it was supposed to cost a city around 1.2 million. Tonight, thanks to a lot of work and I mean, down to the, it was down like the final hours I submitted this, going back and forth. We were able to bring the cost down from phase one of this project to under 500,000. That's a saving of over 700 grand from the original estimate. Just a few weeks ago, we were at 700,000 and George wasn't happy with that number, so we kept working on it. And I'm proud to say we got it down 250,000 lower by tightening the scope for phase one. Yeah, this is, this is a big one, so I'll leave it to you guys to discuss, ask questions and take your action.
No questions from council?
Is phase one getting the water over to the tertiary plant?
Yes.
Okay, then we already gave direction for that years ago. We've also. Committed 150 or 200,000 dollars of the ARPA funds towards this, so that takes that 460 down to, you know, 260. There's 2.7 million dollars in the sewer capital improvement fund, which we can use, so I think, yes, you can, you can use capital improvement funds.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll also add to that, the road that goes through the plant, that all includes new pavement through that road or, sorry, just the trenching that includes. Three inches of asphalt deep. I believe we're going seven feet wide, so the, the entire road. So, yeah, just wanted to add that.
Any other questions from council, comments? I'll say we've probably spent a couple hundred thousand dollars in studies to try and figure out how you can do it for 400,000, so it's pretty impressive.
I'm very curious about all of these, this talks about partners and so forth. And. That needs to be talked about more. Not put it all on the backs of the taxpayers. So.
We discussed this at length, that this is a very, very necessary project. We want to become independent and. Tertiary, selling a tertiary water potentially could be very, very revenue rich for a city.
Can't sell our tertiary.
Personally, without looking at the long term and looking at the current situation and knowing what we've gone through with the golf course in partnership with new owners. And seeing the pieces that we've had in the past with droughts at different times. My understanding of this plan is a serious backup for you to get water to the golf course.
Yeah, I, I forgot to add that in my, my little speech tonight. It will take us away from any future problems, right? Now we have this backup source on top of that lagoon in the back, so it's extremely beneficial.
I just wanted to point that I appreciate your work. Thank you.
And Councilmember Lefane, I'm sorry, what was your question?
I didn't have a question.
Or what, what did you say just a second ago? I'm, I'm sorry, okay. Oh, it was the partners, right? Making money.
This was just, this was council comments. I wasn't asked.
You don't want an answer for it? I came from an area where the actual water district paid for all the tertiary costs and paid for the water to supplement, to supply to the town. So there's, there's all these different options out there. They paid for everything. They started, you know, pouring in money to upgrade things, so we just got to get it over there first and get it going.
All right, yeah, open up the public comment. Any public comment on this?
You scared me at the very beginning. When you said that we're about out of water. Coming down from Arsa currently and you wondered to know whether or not we're going to be able to use CDCR water. What's the story on that? I thought we had everything settled. I thought we had nice Title 22. We were going to get plenty of water down from Arsa. We had reservoirs that were full or nearly full. With water available to us. What, what happened? Where are we at now? Do we have water?
No, I'm not the attorney. Can't answer that. I just know that we're almost out of water.
Yeah.
We're almost out of Arsa water. Listen to that. We're almost out of Arsa water. What are we going to do? You got a contract. Your contract is with the Sierra Golf Management and your contract says you got to give them water. Where are you going to get it? What are you going to do? CDCR. CDCR water through their treatment plant, down through our tertiary plant. That's the way to go. You don't like it, Jack? I know Stacy doesn't like it. That means Jody doesn't like it.
That's not true. That's not, that's not a fair statement to say.
Okay.
I, I don't appreciate that whatsoever.
Okay, so let's, let's see once what we're going to do about this, guys, because we're getting to the hot time now. We only had 100 degree day in July. We've got 100 degree days coming up this month. And if we're running low on water, we're in trouble.
Mr. Rhodes, it is being addressed. It is being addressed as we speak.
It's being addressed.
It's being addressed as we speak. I can't say anything more than that.
I hear that, I hear that every meeting.
Yes.
Any other public comment?
I'd like to thank Justin for all the work he done on this. If it would have been some of the other councils, this would have been a million dollar engineering job before it even got one stick of work done. And that's a fact.
And. I object to that.
Yeah, it's a fact. You just paid eight, 100, 700,000 dollars for a 20, Title 22 thing too, which could have been handled. Yeah, didn't? 750,000, I think. This, this is a good plan. The only thing I'd like to say, we got to do something in the winter. We turn 200,000 gallons into 800,000 gallons. Where's that water going to go? You guys don't talk about that. And you had to pump it over to the tertiary plant one time to put it in that where you got the solar field, one time to flood that. That happened. Am I right, Dominic?
Yes, you are, Larry.
Okay, yeah. And they got a real problem about our sewer lines. They need to be fixed. And I know we're, we need to start getting some kind of grant money for this. This, it's a big problem. West Marlet's going to blow up on us one of these days. And it's really bad, but I, I'd like to thank Justin for all the work he's done. And they do have a, a sump they can get some water out of. Not as quite as much as I thought, but they can get over 500,000 gallons. And, and they can use that and it's hooked up. Thank to him. And I think this project he's doing is going to be able to hook up to that permanently. So you won't have this temporary stuff in and you can handle a little more water because you only got a four inch line. A five inch hose has got a four inch line. That's what you got. You can't handle flow. Well, thank you. I thank you, Justin.
All you old guys need to start sitting close to the microphone, Andy.
Hey, you're, you're not too far away from that. You know what? When they start taking, start talking about taking Mule Creek water, I start sweating. Doesn't anybody, nobody's figured it out now that our tertiary plant cannot handle their water? Because it's got too much chemicals in it. And I could go on forever, but I won't. So please don't take Mule Creek water. Because Mule Creek, when they put that plant in, remember they were supposed to put a tertiary plant in? If they would have did that, we could have used all their water. And another thing I noticed going around the golf course, since we've been using good tertiary water. If you notice that grass, a lot of people don't know much about, you know, don't care, but the grass looks greener. Before with the little Mule Creek water, the grass was green, but it wasn't as green as grass should be. So I'm, that's it. Don't take Mule Creek water because if you do, you're going to get in trouble.
I heard Stacy was painting that grass, so I'm not sure.
Oh. But no, Mule Creek water, they said you couldn't take it anymore because our plant can't handle it. It's not designed to handle all those chemicals those guys take up there and all the medicine. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Someone on Zoom, chief. Go ahead on Zoom.
This is Diane Ratten. I just want to say I am so happy to hear that the interconnect project is finally getting some real legs under it. We have tried, Dominic and I tried to get this moving three years ago. When Arsa shut us down with water and we were pushed back and pushed back from both Stacy and Jack. And anybody else in the audience who says it's going to cost a million dollar, Larry. We, I also wanted to correct Councilmember Atlin. The, I believe the ARPA funds allocated were 350,000 dollars. Because what we had was a, a soft quote of 355,000 dollars to complete the interconnect project without a new pumping station. So, yeah, I'm pleased as punch to see that this is finally, finally going to be looked at seriously and moved forward. Ione needs to be water independent and not looking for CDCR water or Arsa water. And moving forward with our own water. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was never stopped by me. The pipe has always been there. That was why I always voted no. The pipe has always been there. Alls we're doing is connecting it internally in the plant. Got someone else on Zoom? Is that it? Okay, we'll close public comment. Do we need a vote to move ahead on this one? Someone want to entertain?
Authorized to commence interconnection project for wastewater treatment plant and tertiary treatment plant.
We have a, we have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Say aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it? Okay.
Need to have that ready in about a month.
Okay, now last item on regular agenda, discussion direction regarding social media policy for council members' oil report.
This is me. Just some brief comments. I know Councilmate, Councilmember Maida requested exploring the idea of a social media policy. There's, this could be applied to council members or, and/or employees. Certainly, there's some First Amendment concerns of if you do a social media policy, it, it really wouldn't be to. Limit or restrict, restrict or prohibit council members from using social media or speaking on social media. But it would set some parameters and some reminders for the rules. There's some Brown Act rules for social media. It's always good to clarify if you're speak, that you're speaking for yourself and not the whole council. So there's some little disclaimers that you could start to instruct everyone to use. But it's just something to be careful about of, if you're speaking about city business on social media. It starts to implicate Brown Act. Public records potentially. And if you're going to talk about city business on social media, you should not be turning up comments or removing comments. So there's, there's those just rules and parameters to set out if the council wants to go forward. In some of the social media policies I reviewed. It also includes the rules for how employees are going to be using the city designated social media account. So it also kind of designates who's the person in charge of it. And similar rules for how employees should handle social media and which type of announcements to post and when. So. It doesn't have to be long, but it could be a policy to apply to council members only. It could include some rules for employees. And if you want me to bring something back that's drafted, we're happy to do that, but it, it wouldn't really be to limit speech so much as. Remind everyone of the rules of when to indicate you're speaking for yourself and not for the whole council and things of that nature.
Yes, Ed.
And.
I'm good with that, absolutely. My question would be about, my, my concern would be about. City employees. I think we're held to a little bit of a higher standard and I, I know, I, I'd like to explore that a little bit as to having to. You know, I think there's, they, they don't, I don't think, believe they should be talking negatively about the city and stuff, but it's, I, to me, it's kind of a different situation. But I'd, I'd like, you know, input from other people here, whatever, but I think we definitely are held to a higher standard. Particularly because we are limited by the Brown Act. They are not.
That's true.
No, I agree with that. Jody, I would agree with the policy for us, but I don't think staff would.
It would, it wouldn't be so much a policy for, it would mainly be guidelines for who's authorized to use the city's. I know we probably have an informal procedure that it's the city manager really, but who's authorized to use and post and.
Meaning that, that the city of Ione's Facebook.
Yes, yeah. Everything else is private, so we don't control that.
Ah, okay.
So we're talking about city, city Facebook, the official city Facebook page, if there's other platforms used.
Right.
It would, it would really designate the, the person primarily responsible for.
What about, I've seen, I'm not, potential Brown Act violations on Facebook personal posts. How, how, how do we address that situation?
Uh, well, to, to not do it if it's a Brown Act violation, but on social media, it's.
No, we can't monitor and I certainly don't want to, you know.
But it's different. On social media, it's different than your typical Brown Act rule of two council members can't be interacting and responding to each other on social media.
I thought it was three.
On social media, it's two.
Has that changed this year?
That's, that was a few years ago, a law from a few years ago.
Dr. Panasco advised us differently. I have pushed for this since day one. Andy Panasco wouldn't bring it. I brought it because there was rampant social media attacks coming from Stacy Rhodes against council members. There were newspaper articles. I'm glad you enjoyed that. And. Nothing happened. As a state employee, we have social media. Policy and they update it every six months. So. I see no reason why it shouldn't apply to employees. I see no reason why it shouldn't apply to committee members, commissioners. I mean, for it to do it.
When I, when I say council, it would include elected and appointed officers. Employees would have a.
So maybe not one as strict for employees, but it is perfectly acceptable. And you're right, the Supreme Court does dance around. Censuring council members, especially when they're talking about. censuring council members, especially when they're talking about city business, not Brown Act violations, but when they're talking about city business. Supreme Court wants nothing to do with it.
Yeah, it would provide guidelines and a reminder of the rules and to speak clearly of when.
Since I requested, I would, I would appreciate that.
But to move forward, certainly other, other priorities going on at the moment as well, but I would need.
This is low on the totem pole.
Yeah.
Okay, just so we're aware of that. I don't want to be putting other things before this.
Yeah, we'd get it. We'd get it on the list. If, if there's, there's consensus among the council, we can get that moving.
So we're going to do direction on this one?
This is direct information direction.
Any other council?
I agree. Bring it back. We're detailed.
Anything?
By that, it would be a, a draft, a draft before, yeah.
Yeah. No. Okay, open up to public comment. Any public comment on this? We got someone on Zoom?
Uh, yeah, there's nothing new under the sun. Uh, the state has a policy on media, the counties, the larger counties have policies on media. There's, you know, you, you can go and, you know, cannibalize their policies and bring it back. Uh, they've all been vetted. They've all been looked at. They're all in place. So it just seems to me the best way to go getting this is to use what's already there. Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom chief? All right, we'll close public comment. Someone want to give a direction?
No, no, no motion needed, but if there's.
Okay.
Your supporter, your supporter?
Yep. Okay. We're all in agreement. Okay. All right, with that said, um, we'll move on to reports and communications from city attorney.
None.
Um, move my spot here. Um, George, you got any reports, communications?
Yes, I think this past week we had a couple of nice events. We had the, uh, the first ribbon cutting ceremony for the, uh, emergency access road at, uh, elementary school. Um, the council, some members of the planning commission were gracious enough to attend the, uh, the, the cutting ceremony and, uh, Jared Critchfield, Mr. Huss, Mr. Borge, who's here, um, and also, uh, Mr. Chief Alfred and Chief Mackey, uh, who were very instrumental in getting, uh, that passed. So again, that was a very, very nice event and it was well attended. Uh, the second one was the ribbon cutting ceremony for the, uh, Perry Earl Basketball, uh, Basketball Court. Um, that was very, very well attended with perhaps over a hundred people. Um, the, uh, the new warden of the prison was there. Um, Mr. Uh, Epperson, members of the council were there, were gracious enough to come. So uh, the first 20 kids got, uh, free basketball. So that was very, very well received. So that was a very, very nice event. Um, so the, the train depot park, uh, that is continuing to make progress. There were some ideas that were brought to the, uh, the, the most recent Parks and Rec Committee to help fill out the, the remaining areas of the park. And also presented at the last, uh, Parks and Rec meeting was a, uh, a public comment and a presentation of the, uh, initial draft of the, uh, master plan of Howard Park, um, focusing primarily on traffic, uh, parking, ADA. Um, and I think they're off to an extremely good start. I think that will allow us to consider some ideas to help monetize Howard Park, uh, which is sorely needed at this point. Um, I would like to, uh, at some point in the future, uh, would, uh, am going to recommend the council to consider rejoining ACR. Um, ACR has been very, very gracious in, in supporting, uh, the city and our, our, some of our proposals. And, uh, I just wanted to clarify the gentleman's statements earlier, uh, with respect to the softball. So I believe the, the council's, uh, instruction was to play softball at the top of the CIP, uh, uh, improvement list, which we have done. And the next opportunity that we have to present a plan to the, uh, ACR board, we will. Uh, so again, but, and that's one of the reasons why I would recommend that at some point in the future that you reconsider joining ACR because again, uh, the supervisors did ask me, uh, to consider that. And I told them that I would relay that, uh, information to the, uh, the council. So there it is. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Uh, moving on to council comments, committee reports and future agenda items. We'll start with you, uh, council member Atlin.
Atlin, sorry. Um, couple of things. The, um, want to address the ACR thing, the, um, softball. So that's going up to ACR next. That's great. Good to hear that. Um, like to see the landscaping go out to bid. We've asked for it multiple times, but, um, it needs to go out to bid. The time's up. Uh, also, we talked about a forensic audit, um, I know January, I'd like to see that move forward. And then, um, want to address a comment from Mr. Larry Rhodes earlier today. So he, he's got a problem with, you know, new people coming in, the big guys or whatever he calls them. And he said they had $8 million in the bank until we came along. Well, actually he had nothing to do with any of the residents. That was the council at the time spending money. But the good news is here's a fund balance from 2023 and we have $14 million in the bank. So not necessarily in the bank, but in funds. So, um, that has increased. Uh, the $8 million didn't disappear. It was just reallocated incorrectly, in my opinion, but it didn't have anything to do with any homeowners. They didn't even, most of Castle Oaks wasn't even here in 2008. So, and Wildflower for sure wasn't here. So, um, looking forward to the next budget, um, uh, workshop I did actually manage to find on city website that the cash balances of, uh, 2023. So, um, some of them are good and some of them are not so good. Cause like you compare the 2023 to 25 and, um, some of it's good, some of it not so good. I'll just leave it at that. But, um, that's a good, really good little, um, list that, that we should get probably every year should have what it was last year because you're, when you're basically spending from your reserves or one of the big ones gone is, you know, obviously, uh, tertiary plan had money in it and now, you know, it's or had no money and now it's got even less money in it because we've been, you know, doing projects. So that's how you see what projects are getting done. Um, but again, looking forward to the next, uh, time we do the budget workshop. That's all I got.
Thank you. Uh, council member, Lain.
Um, yes, softball. I would like that to be at the top of the list, not when we get around to it. Um, getting it to ACR. I was never in favor of leaving ACR. I mean, in the end, it, it turned it out good because we did, we do have a Parks and Rec person and they're doing great things, but um, I was not on board with the way we terminated that contract. Um, I'd also like to get a copy of all the AWA invoices for, uh, I know your eyes just got big. Um, but, um, there clearly is something going on. Um, as in June, 2023, our, our raw water costs in July was $3,800. In 2024, it jumped to 15,000. And in August, it was 5,000. And in 2024, it jumped to 11,000. And then in September, it was 8,323 and it jumped to 11,600 in 2024. Now I know what's going on because I have emails from AWA. Um, so that needs to be looked into by staff. Um, I had brought this up last year when that big pipe contract, public works job, whatever it was, was put into Howard Park and I stumbled across it and I brought it up. And I was told, we're just hooking up a hydrant. But now I've got emails from AWA and someone else saying no. The waters, they are moving water to US Mine and not getting charged for the hydrant. I, I know you're laughing.
I am, and this is recorded. This is awesome.
No, it is awesome. Because there's a lot more here. Um, basically they're moving forward with the easement. They're just doing a workaround. I know you're smiling, George, but this is from the water board.
Okay, that's great.
So, um, unless I'm being set up with, with documents by Larry McKenney. Um, and they also give the individual that they're working with at the water board who's providing information to AWA and Mr. Rhodes.
And we wonder why all agencies think we're a bunch of idiots.
Well, it's a huge conflict. So anyway, I would like all the AWA invoices. I'm, I'm glad you think that.
For what, what period?
The raw water.
For what period?
Uh, 2023 to current. Because even in January, the water has doubled. We're not irrigating in January. So where's that water going? And they actually say in here, because it affected the Howard Park. As soon as they opened that valve up, the pressure in the park went down. When they went to irrigate the field. So our own public works person came up with the concern. And so they said, oh my gosh, go turn that valve off or they're going to find out what we're doing.
My turn?
Give it to you.
My turn now? Let's go with that council member Mitchell first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm fine. I've had enough.
Me too.
Hey, Vice Mayor Maida, go ahead.
Okay, I just, uh, wanted to say I also, uh, like to, uh, put this, uh, landscaping out to bid out at Castle Oaks. Uh, it is, I, I, those of you who don't know me, I, I'm a landscape contractor. I did commercial property installs and maintenance on huge properties throughout a lot of the state. And, uh, it's, it's poor at best. And, um, that's why I would love to meet with Patrice. I'd like to help her in any way. I'd also, I also would offer my, my, uh, resource as far as my knowledge and, uh, on, on the bidders. And, um, I know how a maintenance program is supposed to work. And I'm going to talk with Patrice about that and whoever would like to talk to me about it at some point. But I think it's time to kick Urban or whatever their name is, Ek, whatever their name is to the curb. Though I do believe they should be paid because that's our obligation. Um, but I don't want to pay them much longer, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, real quick, you got?
Uh, yeah, I had stated that I would have at the end of the meeting, the, um, information on AWA and PG&E. So I have those here for you. So those were not single bills. Those were the, um, total for all the bills that we paid for PG&E. So I printed you out the ledger directly from our casel. So you can see what each bill was. It was just picking up the line item for one bill. So the 24,000 that you see is actually for about 15 bills. PG&E, the same thing, the 36,000. So those are the ledgers straight from, um, our accounting program.
So just pick up the last line.
Yeah, exactly. Which I know we had that issue before.
All right, um, I got, uh, let's see, two items. Uh, one, we had, uh, actually two creek committee meetings. One was kind of a tour of the creek. Um, we had it with, uh, three fish and wildlife, uh, people. Um, uh, we're working on updating some permit stuff that was lagging last year. Uh, we're working on, uh, doing some bank stabilization projects, a couple of tree removals and some storm drain discharge repairs. So that'll be happening. And on the next, uh, meeting, I would like to invite, uh, uh, Chief Ken Mackey, uh, Larry with AWA, Rick Crith, and both propane companies from Hunter Lane to do a presentation about the hydrant. And with that, um, we are going to continue into closed session on the last two items. Uh, those of you that weren't here, uh, item four was, uh, property negotiations. Property negotiations, uh, 217 Jackson Street. And the fifth one was, uh, conference with rural property negotiations, uh, 318 Preston Avenue. So we are going to continue into closed session. Is there any public comment on this before we go in? Depending on Zoom chief?
Give him a second. Get probably say it again.
Any public comment on Zoom? No.
On the closed session items.
All right, I got, let's see, two items. One, we had actually two creek committee meetings. One was kind of a tour of the creek. We had it with three fish and wildlife people. We're working on updating some permit stuff that was lagging last year. We're working on doing some bank stabilization projects, a couple of tree removals, and some storm drain discharge repairs. So that'll be happening. And on the next meeting, I would like to invite Chief Ken Mackey, Larry with AWA, Rick Crith, and both propane companies from Hunter Lane to do a presentation about the hydrant. And with that, we are going to continue into closed session on the last two items. Those of you that weren't here, item four was property negotiations, property negotiations 217 Jackson Street, and the fifth one was conference with rural property negotiations 318 Preston Avenue. So we are going to continue into closed session. Is there any public comment on this before we go in? Depending on Zoom, chief?
Give him a second.
Any public comment on Zoom? No?
On the closed session items?
Do you have the date? Yeah. Do you have the date?